Please rise to the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of which stands the nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Uh, the thing, I am out of order, first suborder is to be the South Orange County Ambulance Corps resubdivision BD twenty-four dash twenty-five. Mr. President, please sign it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, finally, this is a project that is ongoing. Uh, we are running out of time. We have received approval for the resubdivision, but we're just computing, uh, there's more time because site plan hasn't been finalized.
Can we go through the project review comments? Project review and additional comments. Office Building Zone Planning, Jane Slavin, May twentieth. Uh, Office Building Zone Planning has no objection to the request. I have a letter from Department of Management and Engineering Account, who is dated May twenty-first. He has one comment, but it has one, two, three, four subcomments. I have a letter from Jay Bluewell, May fourteen. Just talking about the plant, and I have a re-approval, we have the original, uh, approval, probably the BD twenty-three dash forty-eight. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're actually having a hearing now, can you please not talk? Everyone can sit.
Excuse me, sorry. Do you have any question comments on this? Please say it. Mike, anything?
The only point hold you up was at the beginning.
No, no.
All right, they're the only ones that has comments. Sorry, I got no comments.
No comments.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. McCory understands what a ninety-day extension is not circulated, it's only internal? So, I would only go to myself and...
All right, just a couple outstanding.
I mean, but yes, there's, they still have conditions to comply with from all the other agencies.
Okay, can I have any motion for a requested two ninety day extension?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion would be... Two ninety day extension. The motion to grant the South Orange Town Ambulance Corps, uh, two ninety day extensions, second. Okay, right, second. Second, can you just do that in full favor? Uh, can you oppose? Good luck, Mr. McCory. Can I? Okay, next on the agenda is, um, one-two-five South Green Bush Road Site Plan, BD nineteen dash seventeen, and one-fifty-five South Green Bush Road Property Site Plan, BD nineteen dash eighteen. Uh, we'll do this as, uh, separate events.
No, let me ask, they're the same application? We're doing, yeah.
Okay.
Two, two parcels, same application.
Well, we'll read one-twenty-five and then comments, and then do one-fifty-five, and then go.
Read all your names.
What's your name? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Annie Kline, uh, K-L-I-N-E. I'm an associate with Del Bello, Denell and Wood Garden, Wyandotte Whitaker in White Links, New York, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Department one-twenty-five Green Bush LLC.
Gentlemen. Mrs. Kline, can I ask, do you have a card?
Uh, yes. Sure. Steve.
Sir, could you sign it?
I'm about to, yeah. I had a little left.
Okay.
Or should you over there?
What's your name?
Steve Sparagno. Could you hear me out?
Steve, could you just tell your last name for me?
S-P-A-R-A-C-O.
And the gentleman to your right?
Uh, yes, Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design, last name is G-R-E-A-L-Y.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good evening. Um, so, we were last before you in March of twenty-twenty-three, so it's been quite some time, and we've made several modifications to both projects on set time. So, I'm just gonna go over, uh, high-level review, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Mike and Phil to, um, sorry, Steve and Phil to, uh, walk you through some of the modifications. Um, so, this is to, we're seeking site plan approval from the planning board to expand the existing warehouse at one-twenty-five South Green Bush Road, and to construct a new warehouse at one-fifty-five South Green Bush Road. Um, both properties are in the ally district, and warehouse use is permitted use in that district. Um, we're submitting these applications simultaneously, but as was mentioned, um, they are separate parcels and separate projects. So, I'm happy to walk you, as you said, we'll do one-twenty-five first and then one-fifty-five. So, um, we believe that there are no significant environmental impacts of the two projects, and a negative declaration is appropriate, but we are continuing to work with your PRC and your staff to submit additional materials that were requested. Um, so, we have prepared traffic and some other studies, and we're expecting to have noise and air quality, um, in the next couple of months. We've hired, um, engineers to complete those studies, but they're not done yet. Um, but we wanted to meet with you, restart the public process, we're hoping to be before you again in July. Uh, so, during the past year, since we were before you, we've worked extensively on the plan with the PRC, and we feel that it's substantially improved and is the best site plan that we can develop. Um, there's been, uh, circulation improvements, um, there, and we've decreased the size of the building. So, I'll go through one-twenty-five South Green Bush first. Um, so, this is the partial demolition reconstruction, um, of the existing warehouse. Um, since we were last before you, we've decreased the expansion by about thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, it will contain a total of four hundred eleven, four thousand four hundred square feet. Um, we've also reduced the number of parking spaces since we were last before you. There will be a hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces, we previously had two hundred and seven. Uh, the hundred and eighty-eight still meets and exceeds the zoning code and what the applicant expects for demand. Um, and in reducing the number of parking spaces, we have moved the parking out of the setbacks. We've also reduced impervious surface area on the, as part of the projects. Um, there will be thirty-two loading docks, which is the same as before, and forty-two, um, truck parking spaces. And as I said, we've removed parking from the setback areas, we've reduced impervious surface, we've relocated the snow removal areas, and we've moved all walls and improvements further away from the wetland buffers, um, in addition to improving landscaping and, and lighting at the project. So, I'll hand it over to Steve.
Sure, thank you. So, uh, let's just show this a little more, and just focus on this lot for now. The reduction in the building that Manny referred to was this year, it was short about twenty feet, and we have, later on, we're talking about one-fifty-five, it was thirty feet, we used there. The whole purpose of this was to have more room for turning movements, and I'm gonna have Phil really go through that in a little bit. Uh, overall, the old plan showed lots, let, oh, the parking lot limits closer to the wetland, we pushed it in. We also pushed it in for fire access around the building, fifteen to thirty feet, the ladder trucks on there. Uh, we've reduced a couple of parking areas, and we could reduce it further, frankly, if the board needs to, but for now, this is what we're proposing. I was planning on, uh, there were some snow storage areas shown along the floor area of the, uh, the southern area of the parking lot, and there's also some areas, it's where I can, some of them around the building, but there's not much in the back, so I'm gonna fix some parking out, just put some, uh, snow storage areas there. Again, that's just a basement plan, so. The, we, we did some testing last year, we didn't start it on the ground, so, the groundwork to get the, uh, the groundwork in its peak, uh, high ground level, and because the higher, the, the ground level was higher in the back than we expected based on our previous feasibility testing, we moved all the drainage attenuations to the front, uh, we found better than expected, well, torque rates in the front. So, we prepared a T-one, I'm sorry, an I-two type plan for, um, water quality, uh, attenuation and, uh, runoff production. Uh, we've upgraded the site, we've also, another major, uh, change we made is we're putting a, a main trunk line here to convey any of the runoff from the mountain, uh, behind the, uh, the gloss line mountains. It's probably around, I don't know, I have to look at my study, but it's like over twenty acres of runoff that comes through this pipe. So, instead of depending on the undersized thirty-six inch pipe, thirty-inch pipe, to get to the, uh, uh, creek across the site, we're using a forty-three by sixty, we proposed to convey it directly and s, make it more streamlined and have more capacity, frankly. I think that's pretty much the main, the main change is as we moved the, the parking lot in the back, we provided more detail to our drawings, we have a set of sixteen drawings, uh, full planting plan, drainage design, routine wall, uh, phasing maps, uh, E-Zone maps, it's, it's really detailed. And E-Zone, as you mentioned, you have seen these previous comments, and, um, I think we're ready for one-fifty-five, unless you've got some, you want, yeah, it's one-twenty-five.
Great. Uh, so, moving on to one-fifty-five, um, at this site, we are proposing the construction of an approximately hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and ten square foot building. This is approximately eleven thousand square feet smaller than the building that you last saw. Um, we're also, here, we've also decreased the number of parking spaces as well, from a hundred and twenty to ninety-two, still meeting and exceeding the code, and also the demand, um, that the applicant expects for parking here. Um, we're still proposing eighteen truck loading docks and seven truck parking spaces. Um, we have, at this property, we've also maintained and increased the buffer to the residences to the north, um, also removed parking from the setback areas, relocated the snow removal, um, and moved improvements further from the wetland buffer on this property as well. So, I'll hand it over to Steve.
Sure. I use the C map again, because that highlights the thirty-foot reduction of the building, uh, some parking areas that were taken out, uh, on the west of the building. Uh, this turnaround was added for fire protection, we had to have a hundred fifty hose length from, um, the starch up.
Steve, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, can you stand on the other side?
Sure. So, this, this T was provided for fire access, so that there's a hose length within a hundred fifty feet of all parts of the front of the building there, that wasn't there before. And this, uh, emergency access was made, made pavement, and only fire trucks can come into the site, go through a, a, we have a gate, uh, it's not a creasty, it's actually a gate for access also for the cars that are parked in this parking lot, they can only make a right turn out and down south. So, I think at this point, I'll, I'll go through the green, since similar situation, we also be testing. In the rear of this building as well, same answer, by the power in the back of the building, so we moved everything from the front of the building. There was already a basin there, we just expanded it, and that, again, is better than we expect for torque rates. Um, so, it's a fully compliant, uh, I-two infiltration plan, and, uh, for the same reasons as before, uh, we're, this same pipe that we talked about in the one-twenty-five project will still be built in the one-fifty-five project, no matter what, either way, that pipe is to be built, to help smooth, uh, patches of flow from the wetland out to the stream. And you want to go with the circulation now?
Uh, Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design. So, we prepared the traffic studies, and there's been updates, uh, based on input from your consultants, uh, to account for traffic from other developments that have been approved or proposed in the corridor. So, that most recent update was, I believe, January of this year, uh, it included traffic for the WPT warehouse, and I think six or seven other projects along the corridor. So, that's been updated. Um, we've looked at all the circulation on the plan for the truck movements, uh, we've submitted that. Uh, at the PRC meeting, uh, we were asked to look at a different fire vehicle than we had evaluated before, we've up, updated that to show that all the movements that the, uh, uh, vehicle can make throughout the site and entering and exiting the driveways. The plan is designed to direct traffic, uh, to the Mount U-Abu intersection, um, with the last update and including all this other background traffic, uh, we were showing that it was a potential impact on that intersection. So, based on, uh, looking at the turning movements and looking at the improvements that WPT is going to be making, and all this has been, been, uh, height and, uh, was being reviewed by New York State DOT as part of the WPT project, and they had included all of our traffic projections, and as Steve said, our, the size of the building actually have gone down from what we had studied, so it's a slightly reduction in traffic. Um, and for this plan that I have up now is focused on the intersection of three-oh-three and, and Mountain U. So, uh, as part of the WPT project, this is the, the west leg or, uh, the eastbound approach, uh, they are making improvements, uh, to the approach, widening the lanes, uh, to get a full two-lane approach, uh, to three-oh-three. Uh, right now, the westbound approach, or the east leg, coming from our site, again, our site is here, our traffic would be approaching this intersection, currently that is a single lane. Uh, based on our evaluation and including this additional, uh, traffic from all these other projects, and input from your consultant on looking at what could be done, uh, we are proposing to widen, uh, Mountain U to have a two-lane approach, to have two lanes similar to what would be, uh, exiting from the WPT, uh, project, uh, approach. And modifying the signal, rebuilding the sidewalk that's there today, and that would all be done by the applicant as part of the project, uh, developments. So, that's a significant improvement, significant cost, uh, the widening would occur basically from where, uh, Green Bush and Mountain U would come together, and then there would be some resurfacing and restriping on, uh, Green Bush itself. So, that's now proposed as part of our application, this will be submitted, uh, in the next submission along with the updated fire, uh, turning movements. But that's basically it, and these improvements are to, you know, offset our traffic, but also to account for the other project traffics that have been, you know, added to the bar. With that, I think that's pretty much, you know, synopsis of where we are.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, really?
Yes.
Uh, you had mentioned that, um, New York State DOT's review and comments on the intersection included this project?
So, as, when, when DOT was reviewing the WTP, WPT project, they had also reviewed our traffic studies and our projections, because that was all, that all had to be included in the WPT study, so...
And, but do you have anything in writing from New York State DOT that states that they reviewed that as part of their determination for this intersection?
The, the only, uh, correspondence we have at this point, because we haven't presented this plan, this plan was developed after the PRC meeting a couple of weeks ago, so we wanted to present it to the board, and then the next step would be for us to present this to DOT to review and give us an official response. Uh, the last response were just emails acknowledging that they had considered our traffic as part of their review of the improvements that they were reviewing for WPT.
So, I just want to be clear that DOT has not seen this yet, and this is not been submitted to the town?
This improvement, correct.
Right, too.
We're presenting it for the first time tonight. This plan was the result of the PRC meeting and discussions of the concerns of the additional traffic, and I believe in AKRF's, uh, May seventh, uh, memo, uh, had suggested looking at what else could be done here. We were in the process of getting some survey to make sure we had enough right of way to do the improvements, uh, which we have confirmed, and this will be done as part of the project. So, the next step, and I'm assuming that the board would like this improvement, would that we would make a formal submission to you and to New York State DOT to get their blessing on the improvements.
May I give a clarification?
Absolutely.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, please.
I, um, I'm gonna go through the, uh, consulting reports, we'll start with one-two-five, and then we'll go into one-two-five. Drive, Mr. Greeley, do you want to go?
No, I think, if we're gonna read the comments for one-twenty-five, you can comment on that, then go to one-fifty-five.
Yeah, that will be clear, so go through the comments for one-twenty-five.
And then we do one-fifty-five. Okay. Thank you. Office Building Zone Planning, Jane Slavin, May seventeen, she has five comments. Environment Management, Engineering Account, one time, May twenty-first, this is...
He has forty-one.
Yeah, I squaw, I think you could do forty-one, okay. Cloud Bureau Fire Protection Panel, one time, May sixth, they have two plus, two main comments and four subcomments. I have a letter from Booker Engineering, May twenty-second. This is, uh, great review recommendation, proposed action demonstrate potential significant adverse impact, respect the damage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that one-twenty-five, South Green Bush Road and one-fifty-five, South Green Bush Road plans be approved for drainage study of project comments, of which there are five. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, May fourteenth.
Thirty-four, Mr. Chairman.
Thirty-four. Okay, I have a letter from Rockland County, say one.
Different date. One's May fourteen?
No, wait a minute, I'll take it back, let me go back, it's two separate letters.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first one was May fourteen, which had thirty-four comments. I also have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, May eight, of which they have?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five comments. I have a, a letter from Rockland County Environmental Health, dated March eighteenth, they have two comments. I have a letter from Rockland County Island Department, dated March twenty-ninth, two comments. I have a letter from New York State Department of Transportation, May fifteenth.
They have three comments.
Two.
Well, they numbered two, but the third one's the, less power every night, it's a comment.
Yeah, okay.
It's a comment.
Yeah, two comments plus, uh, we need to work with it. Okay, I have a letter dated March fifth, Rockland County Planning Department, comments passed. I have a letter from AKRF, A, May seven, basically the project description.
The project review.
Review, I'm sorry, okay, project review, thank you. Um, why do we have, what? Yeah, I, I have a letter from dated May twentieth, from, uh, Captain Beckman.
Yeah. It is a letter from a neighbor.
Oh.
Uh, received, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four.
And waited out for a name.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, pretend here, I'm, you see, correct, yeah. Okay, Sergeant, Sergeant Park Drive, let's go. Joseph, my name is Russell. I have a letter dated May nineteenth, from Mark in Ridwick Asser. I have a letter dated May twentieth, from Andrew, uh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's all right. Stayed at May nineteen?
Don't keep yelling at me.
No, it's okay. Uh, May nineteenth, from Randy.
May first, from C-U-B-O-N Hamilton, one J.
Coupant.
And, uh, change back work, I have a brochure for that. Yeah, I have a letter dated May twentieth. Looking for May from, uh, Julian and Coro. Oh, come on. I'm sorry, and Jerry. And I think that's, I don't know, I think this is the, so, we'll just go through. This is all we've got, okay, so that's, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, there's one other letter dated Sunday, May nineteen, from Brady Amun Clark, and I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
Good, you and I have the same home, so that's, okay.
It's a new name, I have not heard of it before.
We just wanna make sure we got those letters, yeah.
That's all for, that's all for, for this submission, and then there's a second package that was the previous.
Right, yeah, I have all those, the previous regulars, which we don't have to address right now, because we're, we're in the, uh, yeah. Okay, um, any input comments on this?
Yes.
Just one-twenty-five. One-twenty-five, um, what size is that building gonna be?
It's going to be, uh, oh, sorry, wrong page, it's going to be, um, four hundred eleven thousand four hundred square.
Two sixty-eight thousand, or, just, expanding by, huh, four to four hundred.
So, it's gonna be four, four hundred, four hundred and a... Uh, four hundred thousand, and you're, and you've increased it how much? Three thousand, thirty-five hundred?
About one forty-seven.
Yeah, it went from one forty-seven thousand, now the expansion's to one forty-three, four hundred.
I know we're only going one-twenty-five now, so how big is one-fifty-five?
It was one-twenty-eight thousand, it's now been one-seventeen, one-hundred-and-twenty. Reduce that one, that thirty.
Steve, again, if you could...
So, we're talking, I think, one-twenty-five. Okay, um, I'm sorry. Yeah, half a million, or five hundred thousand. How many trucks is, is this in service?
Um, there are thirty-two loading docks and forty-two truck parking spaces.
How many trucks are gonna come in and out?
Yeah, in terms of peak hours, um, we have, uh, I believe, in order of nine to ten trucks in a peak hour, so, here's spread out. Total entry and exit in a one-hour period.
So, nine trucks in that?
Yeah.
And peak hour, what's peak hour?
Well, we have in the morning and we have in the rush hours, basically seven-thirty to eight-thirty, uh...
So, we're gonna put more traffic at rush hour, on this.
Yeah, that would be the maximum.
Maximum.
We go, a lot of these will, uh, exit before the rush hour, but from our analysis standpoint, that's what we consider in terms of the evaluation. You know, most of these facilities, you find that the traffic goes out before the rush hour, or that's what we analyze. You know, most of these facilities, you find that the traffic goes out before the rush hour, or that's what we analyze.
Is traffic report, I think, shows a decrease in traffic from two thousand and ten. Can you explain that?
There, well, there was, there were updates, uh, that show increases because we included background growth and traffic from other developments. So the total traffic has increased, uh, since two thousand and ten. And it will increase further with these other projects that we include.
I, I want to quickly clarify though. Um, if I, it's been a few years since I recall from, uh, this conversation we've had before, but I believe your traffic study, um, at the very beginning included school buses that were perking on site, and so part of that reduction was the school buses.
Not on three oh three core, the total, I, I think on Green Bush, there was some reduction.
Are you gonna widen Green Bush?
So, the proposal is to widen up to Green Bush. And we would resurface Green Bush up toward the access, uh.
But you're not gonna widen Green Bush?
No, there's no proposal to widen, other than at the entries, at the entrance points.
But when you come out of your facility, you're gonna make a left turn?
Coming back towards.
What's gonna prevent them from going right?
So there's two things. At the combined access point, we have effectively no radius that a vehicle, for a truck to make that turn. So, for example, at this, at this driveway here, we have a very tight radius, it's about a ten-foot radius. So a truck cannot make that maneuver. Trucks are not allowed to go out this point here. Um, and then in terms of the entry movement, there will be some widening just at the entrance points. That's the proposal at this point, that's what we've been discussing with the.
But Green Bush is what, um, why is meaning from?
It's one lane in each direction plus shoulder area, in, in this section.
Twenty-six, thirty feet?
About twenty-six feet, yeah.
And you're, what size is the truck you have, are you gonna be, uh?
There's up to WB sixty-seven vehicles, you know, which is.
Fifty-three foot trailer?
Yes, correct.
Eighty feet one. Seventy-five D B D.
Seventy-five, yeah.
And you're gonna turn on Green Bush?
Correct. Yeah, so there, the, the exiting movement would be this movement, and then down to Mountain View and out.
Have you done, have you done traffic studies, that the trucks are in and out and all of that?
The movements, turning movements, yes.
Do we?
That's, that's in, that was in your original submission. There's been some updates, and then we also have the new fire, uh, truck movements that we will be submitting. Yeah, we looked at not all the movements, uh, on and off of Green Bush, and also on the site to make sure that, uh, all the vehicle movements can be accommodated. So, as you see here.
That new lane from the top is submitted?
Uh, the, these were submitted, but they've been updated. So the new submission is gonna be coming into the board. But just to get that here.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
We haven't seen that. And, and did you do the study coming from Green Bush out to three oh three, make a right turn?
Yes, all the old movements, in and out of the intersection also. And again, that would be in the next submission for the improvements.
This study was done coming out of Green Bush for a left and a right turn onto three oh three?
Correct.
Because there's nothing going up Mountain View.
Correct, there's no, no truck traffic will be going up Mountain View. All traffic is coming out to the intersection, the movements would be here. And then tracking, uh, both north and south onto, and there's widening here, uh, to accommodate the vehicles coming in, and widening here for company vehicles.
What about coming, vehicles coming, going south?
South down on three oh three, this turn, uh, we've run that also, I don't have those diagrams with me, but, uh, we've run, but maybe it is. No, I don't have that. But yeah, we've run all those, that's a requirement, and we have to make that submission to NIST.
So you, I just can't believe you don't have any plans to widen Green Bush Road for trucks.
Well, we'll take another look at it, but in terms of the section this year, other than at the entrance points, that's the only place we're proposing to widen, but we can look along our frontage. On the other side, we can't widen here with the cemetery, but along our frontage, we could widen the shoulder. I wouldn't change the lanes, they're standing twelve-foot lanes, but we could improve the shoulder along that side.
As long as you stay to the.
The eastern side, correct.
Western side of your, of the cemetery.
Correct, yeah, we can't go towards the cemetery, there's no room to do any widening on that side.
By widening the Green Bush coming out onto three oh three here.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna have any impact on the Spark Hill Creek?
Uh, no, the, the widening here, uh, won't affect that, and we're gonna have to, you know, improve the shoulder area.
I'm talking about the, the right turn, because Spark Hill Creek is right there.
Yeah, no, we're, the widening, we're gonna widen actually on both sides. So right now, along the edge of the traveling, we have an asphalt sidewalk.
Right.
That's where we're gonna be widening, so we're not gonna affect the creek here. And then on this side, we're gonna be widening to improve the shoulder width, and to get the full alignment.
You're gonna take the eastwards on there?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna take the ten-foot eastwards?
Yeah, it would be within the right, I guess. And then the widening transition back, and right now, we're not proposing to change any of the widths on Green Bush itself, but other than at the entrance.
No, I'd like to see.
But we can look at, you know, some.
I'd like to see the, the turning designs that you did.
Absolutely.
I have another.
Okay, thank you. Do you see anything?
Um, so what's the current ideas on one twenty-five at Green Bush?
Well, right now, there's existing, uh, docks here. This is used, this portion of the building, I believe, is used mostly for office.
I, I, can I cut off and explain?
What's your name?
Yes, Simon, yeah.
Jake.
Do we favor signing, state your name and address of the reference?
State your name and address.
Uh, Jake Berdugo, the owner's representative.
Spell your last name.
B as in boy, B R D U G O.
Thank you.
So currently, um, this is occupied primarily by one tenant, imagine this was cut into four. So.
You still on the other side?
Yeah. So this is, um, I would say seventy-five percent of this building is occupied by a company called Prime Packaging. They just have boxes, and they have to store them, they don't manufacture them. This was the, the former office, uh, then the other quarter is, uh, company PDI, who I think they manufacture down the road, but this is just bulk storage for PDI over here. Um, this used to be the office for PDI.
Right, but, uh, Stephen, do you have the existing drawing?
Uh, I don't have a, on the board, but I have it in my site plan, I can pop it up real quick.
Um, PDI vacated, PDI vacated from the office, uh, a couple of years ago, and there is no demand for office building of that size since. So that's currently, we have LOIs for, uh, letter of intent for Prime Packaging that would take this entire space once built and approved, and also for one fifty-five South Green Bush, we have an LOI from Prime Packaging as well.
Yeah.
Happy to answer any further questions about tenants, day-to-day operation.
Buses that are parked there.
The buses that are parked there are on a year-to-year contract, and we have an agreement with them that we cannot, um, ever terminate the lease mid-school year. We would give them ample notice, and that they can ride out the rest of the school year, so that the buses will not be affected. But upon approval of this, buses will no longer be there.
And can you talk a little bit about the, uh, is it LOI?
LOI, letter of intent.
Right, um, what, what does the company do, and what are they gonna be using the building for?
So Prime Packaging, what they do is, they supply, if you're, if you have a company that you wanna, you manufacture, let's say, toys, you need boxes for those toys, we live in a shipping environment, age right now, everyone orders on Amazon, each of these products come in a box. So those bo- they manufacture them somewhere else, they store these boxes. We've actually walked some of the neighbors through, um, they wanted to see what their operation was like. It's just rows and rows of pallets of just boxes. And they just store them there, and then they, they come in and they come out. That's, that's really all it is, and minimal employees, they, they, I, I was in this building, um, last, last week, and I think they had maybe ten employees in the entire building. It's just mostly forklifts, they come, they stop, and they hang. Um, their business has grown substantially, so they, they would like to expand.
My other question is, the portion of the parking area that's closest to wetlands, would let some forty feet to the wetlands, uh, how did with the reduction, may you talk about, how many feet is it then now in front?
I'm gonna scale it real quick, because this is the old one, mine, I can mean it. It was at one point, thirty, twenty feet from wetland, and now it's almost forty-five feet in that particular spot. So in general, it's been moved over, uh, twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet, so about forty-five feet now, so.
Right. At that one point, I mean, in measuring different areas, it fluctuates all around.
What's that one point, like, why, why is it different?
No, no, it's measured just for sensitivity.
Oh.
It's just, or, or, old proposed versus new proposed.
Right.
The yellow, the, the pink line versus the new black line.
Right, so you're saying if you venture up, it could be closer, or is that what you're saying?
Either way, this is the old, and that's the new, it's been moved further away by twenty-five feet.
And I have something else like that, we don't need all this parking. I mean, if the board wants us to reduce this further, to go even further away from the wetlands, we're happy to do so. As I mentioned, I was in this building last week, there's ten employees, I don't need a hundred parking spots for storage warehouse.
We just need to drive around the building for fires.
So I can even go another eight feet or more away from the wetlands if it's satisfied. Nineteen feet is satisfied, board, every decent perfect surface.
No problem doing that, that's what the board wants.
Was this plan submitted to the department here?
Uh, I'm not, I don't believe it has. Uh, there's no whaling disturbance, so I don't know if it needs to be.
And DEC though?
DEC, um, I don't know if the town submitted to DEC.
They'd have to check the circulation. If they're required to, they would have.
There should be a letter from our wetlands engineer, uh, Bill Kenny, who, um, on his report says no impacts to the, um, to the wetlands. If it wasn't in this submission, it's definitely in previous ones, and it's only improved.
Okay, I have any other questions right here?
Mike, Nick?
Yes.
Okay. Just a, and that was, okay, not matter. Okay.
The full environmental assessment form, it's gotta be revised at, at three o'clock, number three, dated five seventeen twenty-four. If connection would be a, please clarify the department comment. Building, uh, building apartment number three, and A K O, page four, dividing item six J, uh, E two H one. We want to know the question, does any part of the property contain wetlands? Yes, should be yes.
Yeah, that might have been an auto response from the DEC website, but we.
Yeah, gee. It's, it's, it's yes on that one, I think.
Yeah, not a problem, we'll, we'll fix it, we're outside.
Okay, when are you, what plans to join the site, why wasn't Spark Hill Creek listed there? On number four, or so five is marked, yes. Since it's on the New York State list and there's no, should be listed.
The New York State, you mean, I refer to the category item number three, which also alludes to the Spark Hill Creek. Um, the SWIP we prepared, just so you know, I contacted the DEC, and I got clarification from them. The, the two thousand eighteen list is not part of the G V O twenty, O one, latest adopted, uh, New York State DEC, uh, uh, rules and regulations. It was the two thousand sixteen that was part of that, not the two thousand eighteen. So that's why it's not listed on there, it's not part of the adopted New York State DEC SWIP, uh, G V O twenty.
But it's still not in New York State, listen, here, board by.
But it's not.
But it's listed on the poll today, yeah.
It, it may be listed on there from, uh, automatically coming up, but I'm just saying, the, the SWIP was designed, uh, with re, you know, in, in conjunction with the O two, O twenty, G V O twenty, O one manual.
Well, I'm looking at the full environmental assessment form.
Okay.
And that's what I'm looking for, the answers are on.
We'll be the answer, uh, to respond to that question now. But I just wanted to clarify that, just so that there's any question on it.
Yeah, I don't, my opinion is it should be, but.
Yeah, but we'll definitely get you, the answer that you're looking for. What, I, what is that, number five, six?
Okay, it's, uh, it's one, uh. P U two, okay. All right, I'll try this one here. I'm gonna start out, hey, was it E two, page one, you can back them up to here.
It's by the what?
Two, okay, that's very close, okay, that's H, it's on page eleven we're talking about, item H, uh, E two. And there's, does any portion of the project contain wetlands? You said no, it doesn't contain.
Well, that should be yes.
Should be yes, yes, I'd be corrected, it's on, it's on a couple of the items. Now, you go down, page number four, number three, it says here, are any wetlands brought by these women or projects site regulated by any federal, state, or local agency? And it says you have A, you have the already core engineer in wetland, but it also says the streams there. And I think the S, Spark Hill Creek is under the state.
This Spark Hill Creek though is not on the site, it's across the stream.
Right, but it's affected, it says, if you read here, it says within or adjoining the project site.
Okay, we'll edit it.
Right, now. Okay, Rockland County Planning, they commented five fourteen twenty-four, number three, five seven eight, ten fourteen twenty-seven. The raised concern is about the runoff into Spark Hill Creek, as well as construction in the rapiing buffer, five, uh, or adjacent to, a significant biodiversity area, and use of salt in the winter. Summarize more within those numbers, if you want the numbers, you know, if you want that, if you need it.
Uh, I, you three, I know that, well, where are we talking about here?
Three, five.
Five.
Seven, eight.
This is response to item three.
From who?
It's from, uh, the DEC.
Are you fifteen?
Yes, I contacted them to make sure that, uh.
Can we get this?
I just got it, I, I was reviewing it with the team, and I was going to, now that you brought it up, you're giving it to you now.
No, we can't do that.
You can take that.
Okay. It's fine.
Because I haven't read it.
Yeah, that, if it, it has not been submitted to the planning department, it's not part of the official.
No, I won't submit, I'm just answering the question.
But they do raise the concerns.
Right, I understand, the concern is, that's, they're entitled to the concern, but I, the research doing at DEC, the SWIP does not have to abide by this three thirteen, uh, this is special pair of words, only the Rockland, only three areas in Rockland, Rockland Lake, Congress Lake, and the Spark Hill or something, one of the.
Spark Hill Creek?
No, no, not the, it's the, I, I can't remember the actual name, it was the lake, it wasn't the creek, I'm sorry. But in any case, that one's fine, I, it's fine for that. Uh, you have, what, I lose five, you said?
Yes, it says items five, seven, eight, ten, fourteen twenty-seven.
Okay, it was gonna be five.
Can we stay on number three? You'll have to clear that up with Rockland County.
Right.
Yeah, not a problem. Run on an assessment, yep, that's not a problem. Bill Kenny, you're running specials through, took care of that.
Number five?
Yep. That, that's Phil Kenny, that's our wetland specialist, we're just at.
Okay, numbers seven and eight?
Uh, parking there is less than forty feet from the federal regulated wetlands, we will have Phil Kenny address that too. I think in his report.
Number seven is talks about the, uh.
Eight, I mean, I was talking eight, about eight.
Number seven, we're talking about the, uh, New York Natural Heritage Program database, and it's pushing the closed building, and paging will be within the rapiing. And paging will be within the Rappi and Buffer of the Spark Hill Creek. It's a federally let, regulate, unfedally regulated, uh, wetland. That's number seven.
Yeah, we will check on that one.
Pushing off the areas, that's some forty feet, that's not great.
Yeah, that one we will have, uh, I think it's already been addressed in his, uh, report that was submitted. I, I have no recall, uh, exactly what was in the report, but since he's submitted his report, we've made it, we moved the parking lot, you can see from the pink line to the black line, further away.
This is, we're talking about Rockland County planning as of May fourteen, since their comments is of that date. Okay, number, uh, ten, he was, uh, home court bench he is? Qualify under the Clean Water Act?
Yeah, we're not filling any wetlands, so, I don't know, I'm not sure what this kind of is for.
Well, I, I'm looking at some of the, uh, work that's being done with your, uh, your, uh, your, uh, so far as everything, I think it's, it's one of the, you wanna wind up within the, within the wetland.
I'll verify with Bill Kenny, but I'm pretty sure that the closest spot we become on both sites is then B, to the wetland, from our disturbed area.
Numbers fourteen and twenty-seven.
Fourteen, and it talks about the lighting plan, I asked you.
No, biodiversity area, number fourteen. Rockland County planning. The Hudson Valley Natural Resource Napper identifies eastern portion of the subject site as part of, adjacent to a significantly biodiversity area, landscape areas. Mike, which one, uh, plans, because it was two public planning, we're looking at the, the May fourteen.
I'm looking to May, eighteenth.
Yeah, the May fourteen, a little, little bit different.
I don't have a, that version, but I see the time it talked about, it's actually sixteen one.
Yeah, I know, they say it is one from the original report and believe it's two. One of the reasons. And number, the other one's number twenty-seven?
Yeah, sixteen will loss, or fourteen, in, in your letter, will have, uh, Phil Kenny address as well.
And twenty-seven?
And hopefully it's somewhere in this one.
Okay, should we, says, it's a two line, due to approximately the Spark Hill Creek.
Yep, it's a source in the, uh, yeah, no, it's not a problem.
Alternative, now, what these alternatives are being used?
I don't have a problem with that.
Now, we're relying on the, uh, construction and the runoff and whatever else, does the soil management plan, is it prepared?
Yes.
Happy?
Yes.
When will we see it?
Uh, there's a soil enrichment plan, and it's also referenced in the SWIP.
You have second soil, uh, in mind?
No, I have a settlement and rose control sheet.
I saw that in there, I know you have a sheet in there, but is it talking about the runoff, and has somebody done with the runoff?
Yeah, that's in our SWIP.
Then whether the SWIP itself, which we still hasn't been qualified.
Yeah, right, I had to work with Bruce on his comments, and, uh, but yeah, it's all in SWIP.
Okay, now we're relying on all your snow melt areas, the snow storage areas, what's gonna be done to ensure that the runoff from the melt areas, uh, will be, uh, for both water separators, remove the wet contaminants before entering the Spark Hill Creek for the home court bench of wetlands?
Sure. There's two different, uh, well, there's several, there's obviously rose controls, but every catch basin on site is getting outfitted with what's called embirhood. It's an oil water separator that goes right in the catch basin, that's step one. Step two, at each basin, is what's called a four bay or still, all right? That takes the hundred percent of water volume, hundred percent, the required water volume, to settle out and overflow to the infiltration basin, where it's then treated, and all storms are erad.
Does that include the back off the area on the east side?
Yes.
So.
Well, there's some areas that go that way, and there's some that are existing, is, existing conditions, that are heading, uh, straight out to, uh, existing piping to free. We can take a look at that, see what we can take and put to our basins, and that doesn't need to be prepped.
You know, you can't do that.
Either way, either way, they're getting, um, embirhoods too.
Okay.
We'll take a look at that, but all catch basins will be getting embirhoods. This is substantial improvement for what I have now.
Okay, uh, DEME on, uh, item number seventeen, five twenty-one twenty-four, the letter, called the, uh, proposed surface going what, Congress, to be constructed over the top of an existing land in separate field. What is the plan to mediate this, uh, dissatisfaction in New York State DEC, and Rockland County Department of Health?
Yep, we have had a notation for that already, on the point.
Was it, was it set, where?
Well, on the set side of drawings, there's some notation that's been added.
That's the location setting. Okay. Reason of asking is, yes, for this originally back at the, uh, PD, playing board meeting, ten twenty-seven to twenty-one, it's also in the DEME letter of three six of twenty-three.
I have to take a look. Here we go.
What page are we on?
Page three. Page three, uh, just to the left of it, it says South Green Bush Road. Yeah, I just found, didn't do it, I knew I had it. Just to the left of it, it says South Green Bush Road. I think there's a note there, if you wanna read that note.
Is the plan submitted to the DEC, I think the Rockland County Department of Health?
Um, well, I think the Rockland County Department of Health has received it from the Speedup Department.
Yeah, we're talking about the, uh, the separate tag.
Yeah, we, we wanted to get the layout pinned down with the planning board before we submitted the material to the DEC. So I don't wanna change the drawing, and have it be reapproval, and I wanna make sure you got your hat on first.
Okay, it hasn't been submitted yet, but.
Yeah, well, I haven't probably submitted, but we have added a note, and so it just needs to be, uh.
No, yeah, it's, it's, it's like, we have to use. Okay, uh, you mentioned before the, uh, the test bits.
Yes.
Uh, do you test all the, do you test sites, do they all pass, do you fail?
Yes, I have looked, my opening, um, discussion.
Oh, no, you mentioned that you did the tests, and they were, they're the all tests.
No, no, I also mentioned that the ones in the back had high groundwork table.
Right.
And we couldn't use the old form of the, uh, pro formally proposed detention systems and infiltration systems in the back.
Right.
And the ones in front were excellent, they were better than I thought.
All test bits passed.
They all passed.
No failure.
The town of Orange Town was a witness, we did use.
I just wanna make sure that one didn't fail.
Yeah, no problem, nothing failed in front. But that was excellent.
Now, uh, come back to the full environmental assessments form, page six. Really with the one twenty-six twenty-four submission of the, uh, full environmental assessment form.
Yeah, I'll, I'll need it.
Okay, it's, uh, page six, E two F, it asks about the emissions, including fuel combustion. These emissions will affect local businesses and residences. Since diesel powered trucks produce hydrocarbons, carbon monoxide, and emission oxide, uh, which are carcinogenic. How many tractor trailers powered by diesel will enter and leave every twenty-four hours, as well as any other diesel vehicle? I think on your, in your report on page seven, twenty-eight, six vehicles every twenty-four hours, is that still correct?
That's, I think that's high because the square footage we do, but it's maybe one vehicle less. And that'll be, we're having an air quality evaluation done, after request of A correct, and that'll all be spelled out in there.
Because the question, we got, uh, what's that, we put the total carbon footprint restructure, and the nine day, makes it from three oh three on South Green Bush, entered the facility. How will they operate within the facility, which means running, and, uh, including exiting back from three oh three? And we should have been, ask the prior applicants and, and people like that, so, uh, is there any objections to what you said, or?
No, that'll be part of the air quality evaluation.
And Rockland County Highway, uh, dated that three twenty-nine twelve four recommends the facility to, uh, ingress access to the site. Uh, does that facilitate the entry and exit from that location?
So the, the proposed act to this driveway, uh, has a wide radius for moving into the site. They had recommended looking at the same configuration at the other driveway, but they were basing their comment, they were reading the, the property line radius as the, as the radius of the driveway. Uh, so we, uh, clarify that with him, and we're gonna make a formal submission in response to that, yes.
Radio state DOT five fifty, we call a comment, one, yes, for traffic impact study, commercial vehicles, tractor trailers, entering, exiting, through.
Correct, so the traffic study was submitted to KIPSY, uh, the letter, uh, from the residency requested, they referred to a traffic study, but they wanted the turning track diagrams and the movement. So it's in addition to the traffic study that was done previously, um, and those are the diagrams that I refer to tonight. And we will be submitting those to DOT in response to items one and two, and for the highway work for the.
Yeah, well, turning, yeah, turning diagrams, we're there secondly. Now, we're gonna do turning diagrams, well, I'd like to see, so we have a full picture of the whole thing. There's turning diagrams from route three oh three north and south, uh, turns onto, uh, Mount Hugh South Green Bush Road, entering and exiting the site. Further, turning diagrams, tractor trailers exiting South Green Bush Road onto three oh three north and south. The full scale, the center and sidelines, now they put the way to see, you can't talk like this.
Understood.
Okay? Now, the building is forty feet in the building, the post?
The height?
Is this exactly forty feet, or?
Of the building?
The village?
Yeah. It won't exceed forty feet, forty feet is the max height, uh, we'll have to put the architect in front of that.
See, the, the reason I ask about the height is, this could be used as a high cube warehouse.
Yeah, I think we went through this last time, right?
Yeah, if I may, um, we, we spoke about it last time, that if, this is not a, um, a building that Amazon, or Wayfair, or any of these kind of buildings, like a high cube warehouse, as you mentioned. And we are finally putting in a condition of approval that if this is the type of tenant that would like this kind of space, we would have to come back to this board for approval for it.
Well, the condition would be, it has to be, well, the DC one fifty, you know, if they want to change, they will have to come back and, you know, have issues.
No problems. And as I mentioned, there is no O I place for the tenant that would be taking the spots.
Okay, Rockland County planning thirteen, uh, the fire truck county claim, this is, that's not the one hundred and one twenty-five, it's a minute to one fifty-five, and not one twenty-five.
We're gonna submit based on new vehicle that we've provided at the PRCB, for both sites, one twenty-five and one fifty-five.
I, I'd like to add something, uh, apparently the, uh, the county didn't receive all the materials, uh, you know, what, the feedback we got. So we then sent a, uh, a link with all our updated drawings, there hasn't been no updated letter.
Hey, did Steven clarify why?
Uh.
Nicole's did not, whoever, whoever, whoever you firm hired to do it, did not do it properly, I, this was all explained to me already.
Well, in any case, didn't have all the materials, so some of the comments like that, maybe on one fifty-five, one twenty-five, and vice versa, it's because they didn't have all the materials. So we then sent them a link, sent the town a link, and, um, everybody had it.
Okay, and at DEME point, on their five forty, one twenty-four, that states, South Green Bush Road must be included in commercial road specifications. So one fifty-five, South Green Bush Road, route three oh three. And where are you in the process of developing, uh, these plans, the essential, or, that's, that's, as I said, has to be, to this type of, uh, uh, horizon, commercial road specifications?
So, uh, in terms of the pavement structure itself, we're in the process of, for daily to get cores, to see what that structure is, and to, uh, indicate whether or not it needs to be improved. Right now, our proposal is to resurface and restrike, uh, and no widening, but, you know, based on the input, we'll look at, you know, do an additional widening in addition to what was just doing, we were doing at the driveways themselves. So the shoulder widening, uh, could be done along the site frontage, but there's two parts to that, one is the pavement structure itself, in terms of accommodating vehicles. The second part is the adequacy of the shoulder widths, the lane widths are standard twelve foot lanes.
Uh, the EAF mapper, uh, E three F, shows archaeological site. At the point of being of, uh, September twenty-fifth nineteen to twenty-nineteen, I guess that the site will identify and show on, uh, one, especially eight, it was an eight American burial site. I just invented identified the location, what steps will be taken, safe call that?
There was a letter, yeah.
I think it was a letter that's none have been identified, I, I can look back from my records, but it was submitted.
That's what I'm. And who's the, uh, and who's the source of the letter, or? Cause what, uh, what's people in the areas, is there is a, there is a. Okay, you're processing, uh, air quality and noise analysis. Okay, now further, the, uh, EAF key, one H three, this New York State DEC vinyl site mediation for the, who doesn't be the site? AKA RF, on page six, eight J, recommends that page one vinyl site assessment be provided, uh, I concur with their recommendations. Yeah, one final question this time, response to the letter from Sporak and Young Board dated that two fifteen twenty-four, page nine, comment twenty-six by DEME. Regarding three foot high retaining wall, be built along wetlands on the eastern side of the property. Response was, retaining wall, no longer proposed, land dated one five twenty-four, retaining wall is shown on the east side. Is it in or is it out?
For the one twenty-five site?
Yeah, yes.
There is no wall, um, along the site, the site, the wall that was.
This is a, it says, I'm reading right off the mat here, it says.
Retaining wall against the building, yes. There's none against the, uh, on one twenty-five, there's no retaining wall on the back end of the parking lot.
So it was moved over?
Yeah, moved over and created out. And we wanted to, uh, uh.
Um, Mr. Adal, in regards to the Indian burial ground, we submitted a report from Jay Trigwell, our land surveyor, which indicated no, um, knowledge or information of an Indian burial ground at the site, and it was submitted in two thousand and nineteen to the board. I can resubmit, if anyone needs me.
Probably the, uh, I think we need another source, uh, the surveyor.
And we requested, uh.
And the face one report would have that, would provide that information.
Okay. Let me throw it at this time, any problems?
I can ask for five minutes right?
Time is now, I mean, it's twenty P M, uh, taking five minutes, please, sir. Time is now, I mean, it's twenty P M, uh, taking five minutes, please, sir.
I'm sorry for the, uh, your, yep, you get old.
All right, uh, for the sake of moving along, I'll say most of my comments for the one five five five. Because together as a whole, it's, uh, such an impact on the area. But, but I will say, one two five, you can tell by all the comments that you received tonight, that, uh, there's so many issues with this plan, and in my opinion, it's not very funny to kind of improve tonight. There's, you know, D E M A, Rockland County, she's got a lot of things still gotta work on, on the one two five. And just to hit on the, uh, the, the DOT improvements, uh, you know, this is the worst intersection in town. You know, no matter what you, you're gonna do, it's not gonna improve it. It's, it's rated F, it can't get worse than that. And W P T's improvements, they're all conceptual. You know, it's even written on their plan, you know, it's up to the se- surveyor to actually see if it's gonna work. So, we don't even know if their improvement's gonna work, and by their own admission in their studies, even at all that work, it's not gonna improve that intersection. So, no matter what people do, this intersection is gonna stay F, and it's gonna be, continue to get worse. All right, um, so that's all I have to say. Moving along, I'll say more when one five five comes around. Take your break, Mr. Nice.
I, I have no more comments at this time, I think it's time to move ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, just to add on to Mr. McCrory's comments, this is the worst intersection, and when you go down to that intersection and you watch the traffic, that side of the street's the worst side. That's where you get ten to fifteen cars back.
Yes.
So, I don't see how any more trucks is gonna be, uh, it's certainly a challenge to do. Um, that's, that's all I'll say.
Okay, Bruce, quickly?
You know, I mean, you definitely need to see that, what they're planning to do with the intersection. Yeah, right now, we got enough. And, uh, you know, also the turning, you know, make sure they have a turning risk, that the trucks can make these turns, that's gonna actually help, you know, that reminds us of this. Uh, land banking, I think we should land bank, have, ask them to land bank that parking around the back. They have, have way too much parking, more than they need. And, uh, I guess there's also, you're not gonna be able to make a, uh, a left-hand turn into the site from South Green Bush Road, which I know trucks aren't supposed to come down that way, what did they get? But, but, you know, if they can't make a left, and there's no way for them to get in there, then they're gonna stop there, you know?
That's what the pulse is, no lefts there.
Well, I, I just said you could put a sign, but you gotta make it physically not able for them to make a left-hand turn, right?
No, it would be, it would be with a raised median pulse.
All right, we need to, we need to see that on, on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, I guess that's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I just have one more thing.
Sure.
Have you done an accident, uh, study?
Yes.
Is that in, was your personal hour?
Uh, it was in the original study that we ended up. I believe we just obtained updated accidents, because what happened was, in, during the COVID years, data was out of whack. So, we had covered everything from two thousand and sixteen to, I think, twenty-two. We just received the, the last two years of accidents, so. In the resubmission and the study that DOT is asking for, that more recent data will be in there.
One more question, how many trucks does a facility service now? How many trucks are there today?
We have.
Maybe an easier question, what's gonna be the increase in truck volume?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to give you that answer, because I don't recall what the actual, if the lines were, they were in the study, um, but I have to get that, we'll get that.
Okay.
Existing and, uh.
Why don't we go to, uh, one fifty-five?
Oh, um, sorry, um, I, okay, so, here we're proposing the construction of a hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and ten square foot warehouse, um, that's eleven thousand square feet, uh, less than what we previously proposed. Um, we've also reduced parking here from a hundred and twenty spaces to ninety-two spaces, which again, means it exceeds the requirements, um, but is still more, and is more than the applicant, um, expects the demand to be. Uh, there will be eighteen truck loading docks, seven truck parking spaces. Um, here, we've maintained and increased the buffer to the residence, uh, residences to the north of the property. Um, again, as with one twenty-five, we've removed parking from the setback areas, relocated snow removal areas, and moved the improvements farther from the wetland. Um, and.
I think we, uh.
I think we already went through this, um, yeah.
To grab it on the comments.
Yeah, but just to.
Let me go through the comments, I have. Project D U has no additional comments. Uh, Officer Building Zoning Plan, James Slade, dated May seventeenth, G S eight. Barbara Lyramout, Matt, in the county, May twenty-first, and thirty-four. Thirty-four. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Morton, town of May sixth, they have total of five, one maiden force up. Booker Engineering, eight twenty-second. Proposed action demonstrates potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage and demediating. We therefore recommend that the one twenty-five, South Green Bush Road, and one fifty-five, South Green Bush Road, site plan be approved for drainage, subject to above project comments, of which there are five. I have a letter from Rockland County, twenty, May eighth. Which is thirty-two. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department, dated March twenty-ninth, they have two. I have a letter, uh, from A K R F, for one twenty-five, one twenty, for the project. And, let me get to the, uh, yeah, oh. We have a letter from, uh, maybe from, uh, the University Department of Transportation, May fifteenth, they have two comments, uh, two, right, plus three comments. That's that, but I also wanted you to record the, um, letters, sort of, in both, uh, letters, in both copies. I have a letter from Joseph and Diane Rossi, dated May twentieth. I have a letter from Mark and Renner Testert, dated May nineteenth. I have a letter from Bradley and Clark, dated May twentieth. I have a letter from C U P O N, Hamlets and Orange Town, dated May twenty-first. And Jane, there was one letter I missed that you had. I'm sorry. There's actually two letters, but, um. Yeah, here it is, I have, uh, my hat, a letter dated May twenty-second from Andrea, this is Conkey.
Right, and there's a letter, May nineteenth, from Brad.
Yeah, I got that.
Brady, Ammon Clark. And there's, oh, and you got Shenantino, Andrea Shenantino, so that's it, yep.
That's it, plus the old decisions. Okay.
Uh, the old comment letters, there has been no decision yet.
Excuse me?
Just, uh, to be clear for the record, there is old letters.
Yeah, the old ones.
Previous letters, but no previous decisions, for the record, there's no decision.
Okay, but they were already.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, Katie, question to come in. One fifty-five, um, is gonna be an exit from one fifty-five? Are you gonna use the same entrance and exit between the two buildings?
Safe entrance, exit between the building. Now, there's no, uh, exit for the little structure, that's for emergency access. If cars, cars turn in.
Thank you. So, you say you're gonna put a raised island or something up to keep the trucks?
Make, uh, so that they won't make a right turn out of the shared driveway. We have a minimal radius, they can't make that turn. We minimize the radius so that a truck cannot make that move. And then, there was a question, I think, about left turns in, uh, that would be worked into.
A left turn in somewhere.
That they, make sure that there is no ability to make left turns in. So, in addition to signings, it would be raised, uh, to, to, for that.
What's gonna keep the trucks coming, coming south off of Green Bush North, I mean?
That's, that's what I'm referring to, that we would have signing, but a raised median so that they can't turn into there, that it would be channelized, so only trucks coming from the south can turn.
There's also an emergency access gate there.
Correct.
Only the fire department has to keep it out. I don't have a way to count it now.
How many, um, I know there's a bunch of trees that are currently there, where you're proposing, I don't have any feet, trees are used to be moving, taking down.
This is what it's gonna look like when it's done.
Steven, can you orient that the same way as the plans?
Oh, sorry. That's how it's gonna look, uh, when it's done. I don't know how exactly how many trees, um, are coming out, so I know they're replacing them in time and then more.
How many feet are you, how many trees are disturbed, so probably you filled that up?
Uh, I don't know the existing move line, where they precisely is on this. Um, so I couldn't give you that answer direct, but I can give it to you next time, exactly.
I would want that one now.
Because right now, it's most, mostly undeveloped, there's just an existing, uh, you see that, uh, several of the parking there, below the proposed building? It's, most of that's paved now, just need to repave and regrade it. So, that area, pretty much a dealing disturbed area in, that, of any substance on the site. The rest is all just little sheds and stuff like that.
Right, there's a small parking area there now.
Yes.
That has some empty track, trailer, right? But then it'll, trees will go all the way back to the next property at two, I think it's two forty-seven, or two, three, Green Bush? So, how, how close, how far are you going back? And how close are you gonna be to the, the nearest property?
Steven, do you have a, there is a disturbance indicated on the site plan?
Yes.
I think that's what she's asking for.
All right, this is the clearing limit line, right here. And it comes, uh, runs along the driveway all the way down, and, you know, close to the wetlands, and keeps it, uh, away from the wetlands, at least now.
Right, that's not what I'm asking, I'm asking, are you on that? You're removing how many acres of trees from the site?
There's a, there's a plan to find it, though.
Yes.
You have a plan.
Right, no, it's not, it does have a few of the planned line, Steven, Steven. To put the new building up, from what point on the plan are you taking down trees?
From roughly, here is the existing parking area.
Okay.
So, how many, how many, I'll give you dimensions of that.
Right, so from that location, back to your clearing limit line, what is that distance?
It is, on average, uh, about five hundred feet.
By, what's the width?
By, on average, it's a five hundred.
And what's the distance from the back of the building to the nearest wetlands on Green Bush? Like, two, I think it's two forty-seven, Green Bush, or two forty?
Well, to this one, right, uh, the one closest to the road here, the closest point, um, is two hundred and eighty feet. I'm sorry, I misspoke, I guess, once ago. This one is two hundred and thirty-five. Same building.
Yeah, did you say that's about five acres?
So, approximately five acres.
Yep.
Five hundred, five hundred, so it does.
But as you can see, we're going to re-plan as much as we can there.
Well, that's a point that we need to clarify on the plans, because it shows you clearing, but then the landscape plans actually show that those trees are all the remain, which is not nice, so.
Yeah, well, I thought it was coordinated with the landscape architect.
I mean, the building itself is almost three acres.
Yep.
So, that's a lot of trees, we have to do that.
I've coordinated with the landscape architect to get the exact count of both ends. And, uh, that's all I can ask for, you know, to provide any.
All right.
Question to come in, yes, how much do you start if we come back to landscaping?
Hey?
Uh, right, the landscape plan. When I look at the landscape plan, show, uh, and say, show all these, uh, trees in the back, that, I've kind of thought of one of the other plans, but. You show it, uh, you look at the landscape plan, you're rating thirty-nine, uh, trees in the upper part of the family alone there. Twenty-four, uh, green giant abidis and some, uh, screws and whatever, some separate trees.
Yep.
So, if you do that one, the whole landscape plan, they're like. Because when you look at. Because if you go to your plan on page, would be page four, file number is S five thirteen eighty-six.
Yep.
And S B Y is one five twenty-four. Okay. When we look at the plan here, we look at the clearing, right? I'm looking up at, you know, the end, what is the proposed stockpile for?
Well, that's when they're taking out the, the topsoil, and they're excavating for the, the parking lot. They have to put the topsoil somewhere.
So, we're gonna destroy all the trees, because last time at the meeting on, uh, it has, uh, the meeting on three twenty-three, it's twenty, three twenty-two, twenty-three, was stated that two hundred and twenty-three trees were gonna be removed. That was the statement made at that time. So, you have a tremendous storage stockpile area in there, we're gonna rip down all the trees, which brings it up to the driveway, which gives you access to the two homes along there, especially the last one, all the way to the east. Maybe that's the only way to get into that house. So, you bring in this stockpile area right up to that, number one. Then I'm looking, you also have another proposed stockpile area right next to the, uh, Homie Corvention Hill Wetlands, in the southeast corner, another proposed stockpile site. The soil, uh, what we're gonna be taking, uh, trees down in that area too, imagine? That's what it seems like, it seems like that's, that's, uh, cut and run, now, uh, clear cut the whole area. That's what it seems like when you look at the plans, because I'm looking at the, uh, the other plans and, whatever trees were there, not showing, but, uh, seems like everything's gonna be cleared out. That's, that's still be, in my opinion, unacceptable.
Yeah, we can, uh, see if there's alternate locations, and this project will be phased, so we can put, uh, the top, top, topsoil pile, uh, stockpile in a, a phase one area that maybe not in that location.
It's, uh, can't cut down all the trees, you know, because you're only putting up, you're replacing those, uh, un, whatever number of trees in there, you're replacing that with, uh, with less than, I think it was fifty, I said, look, fifty, forty-something trees.
We'll give a, a firm count of how many are in the actual area, for both areas.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you next, because you're only.
We'll give a count, so, so we know what we're dealing with.
You're only replacing the total of thirty-nine, uh, kind of green kind of trees over there, that doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, no one told me you actually do the count, so I don't know. Yeah, I don't know until we actually do the count, so I don't know.
Well, I'm doing some, like your plan here.
No, 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 for the existing trees.
Okay.
Sure, we'll clarify that. See if we can find an alternate location.
Okay, because that's the whole thing I wanted to, that's another question I had there. How many trees are going to be removed totally from that stockpile area in the northwest corner, like one fifty-five?
Sure, we'll find out.
And what's the impact? It's going to be, have a driveway there, it's going to go right up the driveway and do nothing, because we know there's sort of a barrier or screen or whatever. So, that should definitely show something, how many trees, it should be, which, you know, not, you know, small thing, but normal sized trees, the species, diameter, that we're trying to cut down. What trees are going to remain, that's the standard, you always know that compares, the trees, how many trees are there, what's going to be taken down, and which ones are going to remain?
Yeah, I believe there was a previous submission that needs to be updated.
Yeah, people used to take down all those trees, just to cover it there, to make it easier for the construction.
We'll clarify for you, see if we can find an alternate location.
Okay. Same plan, same page, we're looking at page four.
Yep.
Okay, see this one, we're still in there, you know, that topsoil?
Yep. And when they're done, they just respray out of the areas that are.
Remember, it doesn't help the trees that were there, because we replaced.
Again, I have a count, I'm going to find out how many trees.
Quite a few to pull, quite a few pulled from the trees in that area.
Oh, we're sorry, was that about?
Now. Now, it's, taking this all down, especially the one in the, the other proposed stockpile location, which is right next to the Homie Corvina Hill Wetlands. It looks like that silk fence that you're going to be putting there, I don't see, what's the distance between the fence itself and the, and the, and the wetlands? And if I look along here, there are quite a few places where it seems like the silk fence is running right on the border, and you go halfway up on the east side of the, of the site plan. You look at the building, and you look at the roadway on the east side, it looks like it spots that the silk fence and the buffer, the outline for the wetlands are on the same spot, which means you're going to be into the wetlands in order to accomplish rebuilding of that. And my question is there, what effect is it going to have on the, on the wetlands with that type of construction? What kind of damage is going to be caused to run off the vegetation to the, the vegetation there? And how are we going to remediate and enhance that buffer area?
This is a great question for our wetland specialist, Bill Kenny, and I'll have him address that in his report if he hasn't done so already.
There's no way you can dump the fence on one side on the wetland, probably that one on the other side.
The silk fence is generally the plain line of line.
Do you, show me right on the.
To show the scale, when I worked with the town, they want to see plain line of line and a silk fence. And so you could say they run along the same line, I could say that instead, but it's generally the same location as the silk fence, unless it's uphill, and they didn't show plain line because the fence is done.
Right, but just looking at it, it looks like we're going into the wetland buffer, with the, um. Good, if you're looking at.
What is the wetland buffer for this?
Hmm?
What is the wetland buffer? If I didn't mean that there was a wetland buffer required. It's an ACU, is there a town, Orange Town Department?
We're going to be commenced by our, our consultants, and. Like, it doesn't seem to be right to walk through wetlands, the damage and destroy it.
I understand, what I'm saying is, we are showing the line we needed before the wetting, and we'll have our wetland specialists address it. My question to you is, is, where, what is the wetland buffer that you.
Go back to, take, describe all.
No, no, it's the wetland.
Rockin County, please get comments again, and they'll talk about it there.
Okay.
Alright.
I remember they talked about Spark Hill Creek.
Right, they also talked about the Rocky buffer, they also talked about biodiversity in the area, and this was damage.
We'll address it, I'm next to this submission.
Also, two again here, the archaeological site, comes up on the area map.
Yep.
And here, two are condition, that would have to be, you see, one fifty, now one fifty-six, which are going, are they going to do a, a, they call it foundation, or base for that building, they're going to do a one point four, it's going to be done over a period of times, there's going to be a.
Probably one point four?
Single four.
Are you going to do several sections after here? Not sure yet.
I'd like to know whether you're doing one four and a half, because it's, so how you, you wear out if you do one four?
We'll find out later, okay?
Okay, so any other comments that are made to the first one, same comments here, if you have any different answer there, or if your answer is the same, you say, you know, it's the same thing. Okay, who's with the, talking about the Spark Hill, wetlands, playing board comments, in this case, it's number twenty-six, it'll be purple on that twenty-seven. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and you still run off in front of those, are going to be running into area treatment? These are storage areas when they melt off?
Yes.
They're going to be running into a treatment?
Yes, we all know it's going to flow down to the embarrages, and all the waters captured and run around the building, to the forebag, and then to the filtration.
Okay, is that in so much of the plan, or is. The emissions here, the same as before, okay, the tractor trailers, and I think the last meeting, we said that there were seventy trucks a day, over twenty-four hour period, tractor trail, for other trucks being powered by diesel, same sort of cloud we've talked about before, the change in. Okay, same with the D O P comments, and Rockin County, I will comment, and the turning radius is also at this point, okay, same as mine, so. Great, let me further this time, thank you very much.
As I pointed out before, what the comments come out, how could you see that the plan itself, you need a lot of work, you know, they're not ready to, in my opinion, do any kind of tools tonight. Lots of comments, but just looking outside those comments, I just want to make a few comments on the effects on this surrounding area, you know, the environmental effects. The impact, you know, one-two-five alone has, has an impact on the area, but if you take them both together, one-five-five and one-two-five together, a huge impact. You know, whether you're talking about environment, traffic, safety, noise, air quality, it's a huge impact on this area. And as I said many times, this area is supposed to be protected, in a real, real way. You kind of stop this kind of development, protect neighborhoods, limit the truck traffic, limit the size of warehouses. All of a sudden, it seems like this area is turning into like a warehouse, trucking hub, and that's not supposed to be in this area. It's supposed to be protected, and it's never meant to turn into this. So the impacts on the residential area and the environment are huge for this project. Just in specifics, I mean, you know, five plus acres of trees to be removed, that could never, the impact on that alone could never be mitigated with the amount of trees you're thinking about planting. The buffer to the north, it's gotta be bigger. You're looking for forty-foot high walls, no screen can stop what the neighbors are going to see there. And we definitely need a line of sight for which the property is north and on the other side is street. What, you know, just the impact alone, so that buffer needs to be increased. Hundred feet is not enough for a building this size. Also, a buffer for the wetlands, and I think Mr. Mandel pointed out, Rockin Plan says you need to increase that buffer to the wetlands, to protect them, you know, just the impact alone. So those are a couple things I pointed out, and I just want to point out a few more on your environmental assessment form. When you go into section C, about adopted land use plans, A is if yes, talks about the comprehensive plan. He said, if yes, does a comprehensive plan include specific recommendations for the site where the proposed absence would be located? And it was checked, yes. Do you know what the specific recommendations for the site are in the comprehensive plan? Because you guys checked, yes, that the world recommendations for this specific site.
This site was previously approved, many years ago, for a warehouse, and so this is a consistent application.
Twenty fourteen, I think.
Twenty fourteen. This is a consistent application with that approved site plan that was never built, that's why it was checked.
Alright, there might be some confusion, because.
Well, we'll clear that, but that's not part of the comprehensive plan.
Right, so we can, we can.
We can address it, not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, check out the comprehensive plan.
I thought that's what you were referring to.
Yeah, you checked, yes, but if you look at the comprehensive plan, you see the recommendation is not to have warehouses and truck traffic, a lot of concern with the neighbors, and then something needs to be done in our town, and the comprehensive plan addresses this, it says something needs to be done with truck traffic and large warehouse. And so the specific kind of to what this project is. So take a look at that, because that, that does not go along with our comprehensive plan at all.
Sure, we'll take a look at that.
And you have seven point five acres of estimated lands, I'm sorry, section D two. It talks about encroaching into the wetlands, you said no.
Again, single.
All our consultants, one-five-five is encroaching to wetlands. You know, it's just a matter of what, what, do you understand what the encroaching means, you know, are you going right next to it, are you going into it? But there needs to be a buffer there, there's, it's too close to wetlands, you know?
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah, it just, I mean, it just, it's just like this. And that's it with the environment stuff. The last comment I want to make is we got an AKRS letter, your comments, dated what, May seventh? May seventh, twenty twenty-four, and you can see through their letters that they have a lot of concerns as well, whether it's with the environment, noise, air quality, traffic. So take a look at that too, because that brings up a lot of points, and a lot of the comments weren't addressed with this submission, so. That's all I got to say for now, we'll wait for the public to draw, and then I'll have more. Okay.
Thanks.
I just to reiterate the comments about traffic on the last comment, is, this is making it even more difficult, right, than the one twenty-five. Regarding the drainage, now the, this new pipe you're going to be putting in, that's going to drain directly. Now, I, I'd like to see, what's that taking away from, is it, is, where does the water go now? And where are you diverting it from, and where's it going to go?
Sure.
And then, how is that going to impact anything downstream from there, that's off the map, right? So we don't get a, you know, a flood a mile downstream now because of work that occurred here, okay? So that, that's what I'd like to see in the next review. That's all I have.
Bruce? Just, this big building, how, how many square feet did you reduce the building?
Eleven thousand.
Okay. And what's the total square foot?
One seventeen, four hundred.
No, that was, the upper building was one seventeen, the big building was more than that, that was like.
No.
Correct?
No, that's for one fifty-five, the one twenty-five is the larger building, because it's existing plus we're adding.
Alright, so the larger building, what, how much did you reduce the larger building by?
About thirty-five hundred square feet.
I mean, that's not even half, you know, I mean, thirty-five hundred square, we had to pull up with that. You know, I mean, you could solve a lot of your problems by making that building smaller, yeah. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of the comments that you just heard, you made it for thirty-five hundred square feet, is it, in my opinion, it's a joke, you know, and how much you reduced it, it's not the. I mean, that's the size of a, you know, a high ranch, basically. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a lot, not a lot of reduction. And the other one, how much did you reduce, the other one was thirty?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven, even that, you know, I mean, yeah, I think you could help yourself quite a bit if you made these buildings a little smaller. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, you have a motion open up the public, a motion of the, I may have a second, second, all in favor? Yeah, you opposed, okay, we're going to open it up to the public. There's a couple rules I want to discuss first. Everybody's allowed three minutes. Now you can see that the town, the board, everybody has a lot, a lot of concerns. So if you have the same concern as someone else, please just come up, state your name and address for the record, and say, I have the same concern as this other person. We don't want to keep talking about the exact same thing every night, because we all know what the problems are, we, we all know what we're working for, we're all working in the same direction, okay? So again, I'm not saying be brief, you've got three minutes, that's it, but again, don't be repetitive, okay? First point, who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, come up, state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Dudley, two fifty South Green Bush Road, Nordberg. Thank you again for asking very important questions, I appreciate them all. The applicant offered to reduce some square footage, but why not loading docks? If you're only going to be using so many trucks, why can't we limit the loading docks? I would like you to consider that when one fifty-five was originally built, none of the conditions that we are seeing now were realized. We are now dealing with the flooding, the truck, the truck traffic, and the inability of the town to regulate. I also like to know, why don't we see anything that is solar, green roofs, or any other efforts made to reduce their footprint? I can tell you, because I drive by this about fifteen times a day, there are a lot of trees, this is, you know, a very forested area. I would encourage the board to declare a positive declaration, and I also would like to know why this is being considered as two projects, yet it seems like a setback is not being considered in between, that would be nice to know. I think they should be concerned with all the setbacks. I just wanted to remind everyone that in the end of February, there was a truck that had a hazmat spill right at the intersection. How do we, as a town, realize what can go bad? Because we hear everything that can go good, but we don't really hear what can go bad, and we've seen a lot of things happening around that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. This ma'am, state your name and address for the record.
Heather Hurley, one sixty West Cribble Hill Road in Konahe. Thank you for all the thoughtful questions by the board, I really appreciate the thoroughness that has been shown. I also agree that I have concerns, same as the board, so thank you for those. I just wanted to say that a negative declaration should not be issued tonight, since no air and noise studies have been done yet. It would be totally premature to issue that without further environmental studies. Question, is the road improvement by the applicant going to include installed signage that says that trucks can't go straight across Route three oh three and Western Mountain View? And that trucks can only make a left or a right onto three oh three at that intersection? Because the GPS system is going to direct those trucks straight across if they come down south on South Green Bush and don't know where they're going. And if trucks come over the mountain from Spruce and make a left turn heading south on South Green Bush and can't get into the applicant's parking lot, where do you think those trucks are going to go? Probably straight, crossing Mountain View up to Western and back around to three oh three to get to this rated F intersection. That's all I wanted to say to add, and thank you again for your questions.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Vanessa Lapins, six fifty nine Western Highway, Quahog.
Hold on just a second, please.
Lapins, L A P S, Peter, I N S, six fifty nine Western Highway, Quahog.
I'm sorry, what's the number?
Six fifty nine.
Six fifty nine. I'm asking in the system, I know. I'm disappointed and disheartened by the recent actions of this planning board. After stating that the WPT project would have no environmental impact on our community, I fear that this is all the charade. Nonetheless, here we go. Nineteen million cubic feet. We talk about the projects independently from one another, but that's really the sum total of the amount of warehouse storage we're going to put in our community. We have three thousand residents who have signed petitions against these warehouses, twenty-three hundred against this project, more than voted for the school board last night. This was the brochure that the chairman referred to dismissively, so please help us understand how it is better to communicate with you, the needs of the community, through the change.org petition. The traffic studies do not make sense when you count the truck bays, it just doesn't add up. We have no way to prevent trucks going over the mountain, and where will the trucks turn around, as Ms. Hurley talked about? We have no way to prevent trucks going south on three oh three. Where are all these new trucks? When all these new trucks are coming down three oh three and turning right and left into the two new projects, what's that going to be like? The intersection will grow into four lanes. Is this an acceptable use when there is little economic benefit overall to the town to put these warehouses in? If the WPT study cannot be used to evaluate this project, how is it accurate for that project when it contemplated all the new traffic resulting in the neck debt? Line of choice is open, yet the traffic study doesn't have the current data. The drainage plan proposed increased volume, which increases erosion, which is just generally bad for the creek in addition to the downstream flooding. This is a sensitive environmental area. Developers make lots of promises that are not enforced. Werthing is a nightmare with the floodlights on three oh three and tiny plants that will take decades to grow. The storage facility in Pearl River on Crokehill is another owner who is giggling over what they got away with. It is your duty to consider the community and look at all the projects together, and their combined impact. It is your duty to protect us, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Matthew Fishman, I live at two forty-two South.
Wait, 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 spell your last name, please.
Fishman, F I S H M A N.
Uh huh, and your address again.
Two forty-two South Greenbush Road, Northburg, North. I am a little less organized than these ladies before me, please excuse me. It's gonna go through my list. Right now, there's too many buses, there has been for years. I don't see why they're gonna be realistic about the seventy trucks when they're not even realistic about the buses that have been there for years. I think that's number seventies alive. They downplay the amount of traffic that's currently there. You said it's a significant biodiversity zone. They do onsite oil changes, they do onsite vehicle cleanings. Any, any kind of chemical that has to do with a truck or anything is done there. There's basically an oil change facility is gonna be in the parking lot, because that's where they're gonna do all the maintenance, that's where they do it all now. That's gonna overflow, that goes somewhere, that definitely goes somewhere. All the salt does, the oil does, the cleaning chemicals, garbage, the truck maintenance, all that's gonna overflow, because things overflow. Things flood around here, snow, when you're pushing things, they go. Catch basins fail and overflow. Traffic on the street and the light, cars cut halfway across. At this point right here, it's not fixed, and it will negate this whole double thing because.
We can't make it up.
Yeah, sure. But, right, right here, coming from this, this facility, when the cars cut across and they like literally go sideways, as you guys know, we're lucky if they're not sticking out on the blind turn. But when they're not sticking out, they're still going sideways, and I don't understand just how to put that in a traffic study or how to convey that, accept that. Just tell you guys about that. Sound pollution from the trucks, the trailers, the reverse backups. If it's gonna be winter, they're gonna be plowing around all this stuff. In the AM, like early AM, they're gonna be plowing for that stuff. That's a lot of noise. Basically, if this gets put in, we're only one move away from a high cube warehouse. The curve people, the curve people cut across and over. The single entrance trucks will use. If it's only a single entrance, what happens if there's an accident there or anything happens there? Trucks are gonna keep moving, they're gonna cut across something, it's, that's just business, you know, I mean, realistic. And if there is, if you were coming down Greenbush and making a left into the warehouse where you can't make a left, he says, what they're gonna do is, they're gonna make the left. What you do is you make a right, cut onto that grass, and then you make a wide turn, and you go over that. Those, everyone here's seen trucks go over curbs before, they're gonna do it, that's what's gonna happen.
That's three minutes.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you very much, and that's all, two hundred thirty-five, you wait, my man, do your next.
Hello, my name is Thomas Fitzstool.
Spell your name.
F I N.
Sorry, I didn't hear. F?
I, N, S like Sally, T E R, W A L D.
And your address.
Fifteen Mountain View Avenue. So this plan, in conjunction with the plan, the plan on twelve thirteen Mountain View Avenue. So I am in agreement with everything that's talked about at this intersection. It's gonna be a nightmare, not just for the trucks. People go to school, people are doing shopping, Count Lot two, Delarte. And what about Nice Pack? Nice Pack at three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon creates traffic at Mountain View Avenue. Thank you very much, and I do hope you consider not just what this is, forty feet tall, what, four hundred feet long? That's a giant building, and what's it gonna look like? Is it just gonna be straight up and down? Is there gonna be any artistic quality to this? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Larry Vale, V as in Victor, A I L, three eight nine Kings Highway, Tampa. And I also represent the Spark Hill Creek and Watershed Alliance, a work group that is concerned about these very issues along the creek. And I do want, I won't go over all of them, of course, but I do appreciate some of the very pointed questions going on here. I hope all the board members, you know, consider the protection of the creek and the wetlands next door a lot. The, one concern I have is, I heard Mr. Shprakow say something at the very beginning of this, and I think you mentioned this at the end, said, we're going to facilitate the flow of all that floodwater down to the creek. I thought that mitigation of floodwater was supposed to retard it and retain it and protect the creek, not bring more high-velocity water into the creek. And people have said this before, and I'm sure you're aware, this is one of the highest flood areas just downstream from this area. So I, I just don't understand why, there may be a, I haven't seen the SWIP, I don't even know if it's done yet, but there's, I, if the building itself and the impervious surface that's being added here is being mitigated at least to some degree by a stormwater detention or infiltration plan, if there is an additional amount that's being rushed to the creek, I just don't understand. It sounds like it totally cancels out the whole intent of this, and things would be much worse afterwards. So anyway, I encourage you to look into that, and if it is indeed that sort of thing, it's just totally unacceptable. Maybe it's a small thing here, but I've also heard like, well, we have an old system that we're just gonna run, keep going straight to the creek. In other words, it takes ten seconds for floodwaters to get into the creek at high velocity. That should be just totally prohibited, it should go to the regular stormwater mitigation system. And there's one other thing that came up, which, which I think a couple of you alluded to. In the, I believe in the stormwater, New York State Stormwater, Green Infrastructure Stormwater Design Manual, they talk about finding out the effects of down, on the downstream channel. And I haven't seen the stormwater plan, I don't know if anybody's seen it, I couldn't find it in the files here. But this has to really be considered, especially if we're talking about the kinds of rushing the stormwater into the creek, because it's just a point that could get missed, and that's exactly what we don't want, is to have downstream channel problems. So thank you very much, and I think I also agree this is no room here already for decisions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Copying my statement, my name, address, okay?
What is your name, Lisa?
Yep, Lisa.
Tell everybody your name, so I don't.
Sure, Lisa Honig Andrea, and my address is thirty-two Arthur Street, Quahog, which is one traffic light away from the proposed redevelopment.
Can you spell the last name?
H O N I G hyphen Andrea, A N D R E A.
Thank you.
So I live one traffic light away from the proposed redevelopment. Today, I was reviewing the current Orange Town Comprehensive Plan. Goal two is to quote, preserve the history, open space, and Hamlet's character. Section two of the goal states, where appropriate, update the zoning map. It is section three that most addresses why residents are here this evening. It states, establish efforts and mechanisms, including more robust zoning and development enforcement, to protect and preserve the Hamlet character. Now, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of the members who've spoken tonight, because you've addressed a lot of my points. But as a resident who nearly every day drives through the area where the proposed development is to take place, I'm extremely concerned that this development will not preserve our Hamlet's character, nor will it preserve the surrounding environment. In addition to the actual buildings, one must be concerned about the truck traffic and environmental conditions that will cause havoc to the set area. You mentioned the building, I believe, said sixty-three additional trucks added. The congestion from additional traffic, not to mention the additional potholes on the road not designed for all of these heavy trucks, and the general traffic delays caused by extra trucks would be a nightmare. The intersection of Route three oh three and Mountain View Road is already not pleasant, as everybody knows, as trucks from surrounding warehouses and factories have added to increase traffic. I am even more uneasy about pedestrians, and many people spoke about that this evening, about all the businesses in the area on Mountain View. Mountain View's a town road and has traffic from the small shopping center there, it's used frequently by Dominican University, now by the new Calabria Pizza patrons. It's a busy local road that will be harmed more by more warehouse traffic. I'm counting on our Plan Four to protect us by following section three of Goal Two of our Comprehensive Plan, to establish efforts and mechanisms, including more robust zoning and development enforcement, to protect and preserve the Hamlet character. It is my understanding, as you mentioned tonight, that the, the new Comprehensive Plan occurred after the plans went into effect. However, the two thousand and three Comprehensive Plan states in the goals under section D, transportation and infrastructure. In order to support residential and commercial development while balancing environmental preservation, the town will, one, work closely with New York State Department of Transportation to improve the safety, truck carrying capacity, truck carrying capacity and aesthetics of Route three oh three.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, there's one more paragraph, but it's in my statement that I've submitted. And I just, well, a quick question is, what will traffic, what will DOT say about the impact on traffic while the road is being widened? Will trucks be diverted to Western Highway, where are the trucks gonna go while the road is being widened? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Dulya Rinchera.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was just spouting?
D U I L I O, R I N C H I E R A.
M C.
Two two seven Greenbush Road.
Wait, just spell the last, R I M.
N C H I E R A.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was your address again?
Two two seven Greenbush Road.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm the next neighbor, the little house is a hundred feet away from this mess they wanna do with it. I think they should not, don't touch that area. I've been there for forty years, and they stay, one fifty five, it holds all the water from the mountain. They act as a lungs. Rebuild everything, we're gonna destroy the whole system. And one twenty five, together, they're gonna put two buildings up that will destroy the view from Greenbush Road or from up in the mountain. And they're building on the wetland. Such a big building, and a big operation. They're not, they're not nice neighbors. I was there when Volkswagen was there, they really care about their neighbors. They're telling you one thing, they're doing that one. I like his comment about, there are trucks all over the property, full with boxes, I guess they're stacking sand yavlos to pick up.
Sir, address us, please, I'm sorry.
There's a truck from five o'clock in the morning till midnight, making noise, up and down, there's no room on the street anymore. They gotta stay, buffet, one hundred feet from my house. How about all the smoke? One hundred feet from my patio, and the neighbors, other neighbors' patio, for the bedroom? One hundred feet away from the water, because we don't have, Greenbush Road, that dark area doesn't have a city water. When I'm wet. All wells, they're contaminated. They stay, came to us and installed a filtration, especially on one fifty five, we all, the new houses, they're all contaminated. And they come every six months to check the water and make sure we'll be able to trip, and give us the result. Anybody wants to look, this is the result.
Can you give it to us, you have to give it to the building department.
To the building department. We just have a project, what's gonna happen? Who'd be responsible if they're aware, or anybody by family or neighbors gonna get sick? Who'd be responsible? The company, the town, to give the right to build? I wanna know, I wanted this to be on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Hendrick.
Spell your last name, sir.
H E N D R I C K.
And your address.
Address is six Mountain View Avenue.
Go ahead.
I've lived at Mountain View Avenue all my life, and I've seen what's gone on over the years. Traffic is murdered at this time. To, you can consider putting a building like that, of that size, in this area, and adding the truck, the truck traffic is not even thinkable. And to think about the stream itself, when it overflows, I reap the benefits of seeing water in my basement. So adding more water to this stream, to this problem, is not gonna help. I totally agree with your comments earlier, and with my neighbor's comments also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else? Last time, anyone else have any questions or comments on this project? Close the public question. Okay, now, motion opposed, this is my second, Mr. Mandel, all in favor? Any opposed? I might call you now to explain, maybe per report, but you.
Yes.
Motion for lead agent, spoken. Motion for lead agent, motion for lead agent. I didn't think twice, second.
Yes, Mr. Mandel made the motion.
Yes, second, second. All in favor? Any opposed? None, okay. Court, you go and play your, your report, please. Corey, can you go ahead and play your, uh, your report, please.
Let's talk loud.
If you were Mike, I'll be doing it.
Corey, can you officially introduce yourself to the record, please?
I'm Corey Block, I'm with the KRF, and we are the planning and shopping reviewers for the town. So, we're gonna go through part two of the full EAF, which the board has in front of them. Let me first go over the tips for moving part two. We're just gonna be checking if there's an impact or not, and then how large that impact is. So, I'm gonna read a question out loud, and then we can discuss it as a group, and come to a conclusion off of that, and we'll move on to the next question, okay? So, the first is, is there any impact on land? So, the proposed action may involve construction on physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site.
Okay, just wait a minute, well, everyone.
So, will the proposed action have an impact involved construction on physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Are we taking votes, or are we just-
Yeah, we're just reviewing, etc., we'll vote at the end.
So, because we're hearing yes, we'll go into the discussion questions after that, then, okay? So, A is, the proposed action may involve construction on land where a depth of water table is less than three feet. Is there no impact, no, or small impact, or a moderate, large impacts?
How do we know without the geography of the hydro, hydro, uh, hydrology report?
Yeah, their EAF has, a lot of these answers come from the EAF, and I believe they put that the water table was twelve feet. So, we got it down there, okay? Okay. B is, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of greater, of fifty percent or greater. We didn't see any of those on there, okay? Uh, C, the proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. From their EAF, they indicated that that was not going to be happening. Did anybody else disagree? Um, D, the proposed action may involve the excavation or removal of more than one thousand tons of natural material. And they indicated that that was not the case as well. Okay, hearing nothing different? E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. Okay, yeah, and then they indicated two-year construction, so that was the multiple phases. We're checking yes for a moderate to large impact made by them. Okay. F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicides.
Yes.
Yes, it's tree.
Yeah, removal of trees, creating, okay. The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area, that's not. Are there any other impacts that you would like to discuss on land that can be added to the other category? There's also things to go through, like his, okay. So, question two, impact on geological features. Yes or no, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of, or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on these sites? And the examples given are cliffs, dunes, fossils, caves, that's non-very.
No, that's considered an archaeological site.
And that'll be in the part that I've watched, or whatever. So, I'm hearing no. Okay, so then we go down to number three. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, e.g. streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so hearing that, we'll go through the lettered questions. A, the proposed action may create a new water body.
No, because, let's see, it's a, uh-
Yep, heard. Anything different down there?
There's like the ponds, that they're creating, we didn't mention-
They drain dry, they don't produce.
Yeah, so they're not an official water body.
But, Steve, I don't think you're-
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no rain, it's just gonna drain right out, or dry right up.
Um, so we have no for A. B, the proposed action may result in an increase or increase of over a ten percent more, than a ten acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water. We're not altering anything there, so-
No, no.
Okay. C, the proposed action may involve drudging more than a hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body?
No.
No.
Okay, no. D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland, or in the bed or banks of any other water body?
It's small, yeah.
Okay, small impact? Okay. E is, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body, either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments.
Because we don't, we don't know, but it's true.
Yeah.
Well, it's based on the-
Based on the-
EAF.
Yes, that's a very good point, okay. So, also something to note is that when the board is determining this, like, we don't have all the answers in front of us now, so this is not, you know, we're saying that there's an impact, this is, we think it could be based off of the information in front of us right now. Okay, so, it's a certain amount. Right, it's not a yes.
So, I mean, that one could be a yes, then, right? E, could create more turbidity in the water, in the Spark Hill Creek? Why, why wouldn't that, that new pipe, why wouldn't that create more turbidity?
Yeah, that was most likely.
So, it should be a yes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll change it?
Any disagreements with that?
No.
Okay, yep, we can change that. So, F is, the proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water. And that's a no. The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface waters.
Isn't that pipe direct going into the Spark Hill Creek, which is a surface water?
This is specifically talking about wastewater.
Wastewater.
Right. Just if they were dumping, you know.
It does say, was, was that, oh, wait, were we talking about G?
G.
Yeah, G. Okay, so, hearing no on that, H, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to disemption or other degradation of receiving water bodies.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yep, checked, yes. I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site, the proposed action.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. J, the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body.
No.
Small impact?
Yeah, with the mater, right, small effect. With the material that's been presented to the board, they're not indicating that they're using herbicides. No, or small.
Okay, so we're gonna leave that one, no. Unless you wanna discuss it, okay. Okay, the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities.
No.
Yeah, right. Okay. Um, we have L checked, um, for other impacts. You have a potential to influence the flooding on Spark Hill.
Yes.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure that that was evident and clearly all out for you all, okay? On to number four, impact on groundwater. Yes or no, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer?
I think that should be a yes, considering that the areas is, uh, the homes in the, in the area are on well water.
Yes.
Yeah, we were kinda thinking, that's what we were hearing from the discussion earlier, too, okay, cool. So, hearing yes on that, then, we'll go into the lettered questions. A, the proposed action may require new water supply wells or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells.
No, it could. Possible.
No.
Not possible.
Not required, not too short of a bear, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you guys down there.
No, no additional demand, no.
Here.
But it could be new water. Why?
Additional demand on existing water supply wells. So, no, or small impact? Okay. B, water supply demand in the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity of the, of the local supply for long term. Okay. C, the proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services. No, okay, hearing no. D, the proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater.
No.
Okay, no? E, the proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is or is suspected to be contaminated. Okay.
No.
It's a question, I can't read, look up, I'm sorry. Okay, um, the proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or an aquifer.
No.
Okay, G, the proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within a hundred feet of potable drinking water or irrigation sources. Okay.
Other impacts that may impact groundwater?
I'm checking the contamination of, uh, local wells.
Of truck traffic, right? Truck traffic on parking lots, right, with diesel trucks. We'll run off that goes into, uh-
Yeah, I, I think runoff, to be more general, is inappropriate, so the potential to contaminate local wells from runoff from the site.
Okay. How that acted. Okay, number five, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. Yes, okay. Hearing that, moving on to A, the proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway. No, there's no floodway in this site, okay, yep.
Would that, would that be considered downstream? They not flood an area, but the added water to the stream.
This one is particular to the site.
This is particular to development in the floodway, meaning they're constructing something within the floodway. That was that question.
So, noted that. B is, the proposed action may result in development within a hundred-year floodplain. No, okay, project wasn't in that. Or, the proposed action may result in development within a five-hundred-year floodplain. Okay, noted that. Um, the proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns.
Yes.
Correct, okay, yeah, that's right, yes. We've got that marked down. Okay, E is, the proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding.
I'll say that, yes.
Yes, okay. F, is the, if there is a dam located on the site, the proposed action is a dam in need of repair or upgrade. Okay, and then other impacts, G, um, we have the potential to increase, influence flooding in Spark Hill Creek? Yes, okay. Moving on to number six, impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source, yes or no?
Yeah, yes, we're gonna check that, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then, A, if the proposed action requires federal or state air emission permits, the action may also emit one or more greenhouse gases at or above the following levels. Um, and, yeah, I'm gonna skip over the levels, but, um-
So, state-regulated, one second, state-regulated air emission source, is it, state regulates? Do you have, do you want to, just, that one's done. Okay, go ahead. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, in, in this instance, we believe that state air emission permits are not required.
We have no checked down there. B, the proposed action may generate ten tons a year or more of any more designated hazardous air pollution or twenty-five tons a year or more of any combination of such hazardous air pollutants.
Well, you never know. You don't know. Because of the-
The use, who's gonna be in there, so, potentially.
They're gonna be using diesel trucks. So, the newer diesel trucks, their emissions are pretty clean. The older ones, their emissions are pretty bad. So, uh, we need to have consideration. We don't know how many of these old trucks are on the road. I mean, they go for a million to millions.
And there is the other impacts section, too, so maybe it doesn't apply to this one specifically, but we can add it later. It's up to you, it's, though, um, we're still on B technically. The proposed action would generate tens of tons a year or more.
Oh, we need to change it.
I would say it makes sense to defer to the experts, and if they are proposing no or small, that's what this board should probably go along with.
Um, the proposed action may require state air registration or may produce an emissions rate of total contaminants that may exceed five pounds per hour, or may include a heat source capable of producing more than ten million BTUs per hour. No, okay, yeah, and these are, a lot of these questions are coming from their, um, full environmental assessment form as well. Uh, the proposed action may reach fifty percent of any of the thresholds in A through C above. And then E, the proposed action may result in the combustion or thermal treatment of one or more tons of refuse per hour.
No. No.
No, okay. Some of the other impacts. Idle trucks? Okay, yes, we can-
Idle trucks.
I think there was a comment made, it was, but there was a comment made that while the trucks are being loaded, other trucks are gonna be waiting, I think idling while they're waiting. Rock and candy as a board, you can't idle. Be a hook for more than three minutes, so, that's, I think that has to be, consideration.
So, we can be more general in this case, and just state that other impacts could potentially be emissions from trucks generated by the site, is that something you're gonna all agree with?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to number seven, impacts on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. A, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species listed by the New York State or federal government.
No.
Well, you know, that's living in trees. That would be indicated on their F, EAF, uh, uh, sorry, on the, on their EAF. There weren't any threatened or endangered species indicated on that.
How far away? For endangered species?
Specifically on their side.
On their side.
Okay, no? The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species listed by the New York State or federal government. They're not on the site, so, no.
Yeah, but you have, what if they.
No, again, it's specific to the site, and when you use the EAF mapper, which is generated by the state, it tells you if there's endangered species on the site, and this site does not contain it.
And it not even says like they're on this site, it's like this is a habitat where they could potentially be, and then we would typically send people out to further investigate after that. So, in this case, there's nothing that even indicates that there's a need to investigate.
Deer, I'm not sure if ostrich are on endangered species or protected, because there is an ostrich nest down by the highway corner on the antenna. I don't know if that is on the study within this I know, but it's potential.
But we're looking state specific with this. This number, right? We can, we can check off small impacts, maybe, um, actually then, okay. Okay, C, the proposed action may cause reduction in pollution or loss of image population or loss of individuals of any species or special of special concern or conservation need as listed by New York State or federal government that use the site for, on, or needs.
So where, where the deer, uh, whitetail deer and the rest of the critters that live in the far, in the far, in the claws of the mountain forests, what, what are they considered? Or what would we?
They typically are not.
I know they're not endangered species, but they all lose in their habitat, right, so.
That, that could be, again, under other impacts.
So we'll make it an other?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay. D, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern or and conservation need as listed by the New York State or federal government.
Small.
Small.
Okay, number small. The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect. No, okay. The proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community.
Is it gonna speak up?
Designated is a very specific term in this case, um, that would have come up on the EAF mapper. The proposed action, um, okay, so that was a no, going to G. The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitats for the predominant species that occupy the use of this site.
That would be, well, that's where we would say the deer and the rest of the.
Yes, okay, yes.
Yes. So no.
Okay, uh, H, the proposed action requires the conversion of more than ten acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat.
No.
No.
Okay, no, good. I, proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only involves use of herbicides or pesticides.
No.
Okay. Um, and then other impacts, do we think that that's take, or prior comment was taken care of in G, or do we have anything additional for, um, other impacts?
Yeah, just the, I mean, i- if it's, if it's covered in the last one, okay, we're just, we're concerned about the, the loss of habitat and now the deer wandering into other people's backyards and, and that. Okay, so if that's covered, then.
Yep, okay, cool. H is the impact on agricultural resources. So yes or no, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources. Hearing no, we move to number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. Yes or no, the land used in the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and the scenic or aesthetic resources.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hearing yes, we move to A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource.
No.
No.
No, okay. The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views.
No.
Okay, no? Going to C, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, i.e. seasonally screened by some foliage, but visible during other seasons or year round.
Yeah.
Publicly accessible.
Reading again. Probably accessible.
Publicly accessible, yeah.
Um, this is if, for example, the Closte Lynn Mountain has trails that you can view the site from.
So yes?
Yes.
Your season close.
And then do you think that would be seasonally and year round? Like there's two channels.
If it's, uh, public, of course, now it could be year round.
Year round.
Okay. So D, the situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is, I routinely traveled by residents, including travel to from work, or I, I recreational or tourism based activities.
Both. Or in C, you're talking about people working out. Recreation or. Say yes, yeah, for both of them.
Yep. Yep, okay. E is the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource.
Yes.
Okay, um, and at, are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project?
Yes, that's, yes, right.
So this question is a little confusing. It is low impact if there are similar projects visible, but it is a moderate impact if there are not. Just to clarify, so would you like to check off the, uh, no or small impact or moderate, large impact box in this one?
No.
Large.
Small.
Small.
Because there's already existing warehouses. Yeah, okay. And then other potential impacts for aesthetic resources. No. Okay. Number ten, impact on historical, historic or archaeological resources. So yes or no, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so hearing yes, we go to A, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site, or district, which is listed in the National or State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks or Recreation. Certain information to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. The proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Recreation ship of archaeological site.
Yes.
Okay, yes. And then proposed action may occur wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an archaeological site not included on the New York ship of inventory.
Yes.
Yes. And on D, just to be slightly more specific, other impacts, uh, the proposed proj- project site is identified um, by local concerned citizens as having the potential to contain a Native American burial ground. And then E, if any of the above, A through D are answered, moderate to a large impact may occur, continue with the following questions. So I is the proposed action may result in the destruction or alteration of all or part of the site or property.
Yes.
Okay, the proposed action may result in the alteration of a property's setting or integrity. And three, the proposed action may result in the introduction of visual elements which are out of the character of the site or property or may alter its setting.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Number eleven, impact on. Okay, the impact on open space and recreation, yes or no, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan?
Yes.
Okay. The proposed, A says the proposed action may result in an impairment of natural functions or ecosystem services provided by an undeveloped area, including but not limited to stormwater storage, nutrient cycling, wildlife habitat.
Yes.
Okay, large. Um, B, the proposed or action may result in the loss of a current or future recreational resource.
No.
Okay, no? C, the proposed action may eliminate open space or recreational resource in an area where you such resources.
No.
No? D, the proposed action may result in a loss of an area now used informally by the community as an open space resource.
No.
Okay, and then E for other impacts, we have the project site, um, is adjacent to the Watson, um, park.
Yes.
Okay. Twelve, impact on critical environmental areas. So these are defined by the state. Um, and they are something that are populated by the EAF mapper as well. So the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, yes or no? Onto number thirteen, impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, A, the proj- the traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network.
Yes.
Yes, okay. B, the proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for four, five hundred or more vehicles.
Yes.
Okay, C, the proposed action will degrade existing transit access.
No.
No, D, the proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations.
Small, small impact? No, no, they may, no, but they could use bicycles if people show.
Small, small of a question then, okay. The proposed action may alter the present pattern or movement of people or vehicles.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and then F, other impacts, the proposed action would create unmedicated impact at the intersection of, uh, the U of G Avenue and Bridge Three oh three.
Yes, yes.
Fourteen, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy.
Yes.
Yes. A, the proposed action will require a new or upgrade to an existing substation.
No.
No? B, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty single or two family residents or to serve a commercial or industrial use. C, the proposed action may utilize more than twenty-five hundred megawatts an hour per year of electricity. No, okay. D, the proposed action may involve peak intercooling of more than a hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed. And then other potential impacts. Hearing that, on the, uh, impact on noise, odor, and light. So yes or no, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation.
Yes, okay.
Okay. B, the proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare, or nurse.
Actually, no, no.
Actually, no, right, not.
No.
No.
I believe the applicant did not disclose any blasting.
No.
No.
So no, okay. The proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day.
Small?
Yeah.
Uh, I think odor is a more specific term than emissions from trucks. We already covered that earlier, uh, so in this instance, maybe a small impact is something we can consider.
Small impact?
Okay, I'm sorry. D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent properties, joint properties.
Small.
No or small? Yeah, they provided a lighting type of effect.
No.
E, the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions.
Yes.
Okay, and then for F, um, proposed lighting is not dark sky compliant. That's where we were asking for that three thousand. Okay. Sixteen, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Ready, yes, down there?
Yes, yes.
Yep, cool, okay. The proposed action is located within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home, or retirement community.
No.
No. Okay, B, the prop- the site of the proposed action is currently undergoing remediation.
No.
C, there is a completed emergency spill remediation or completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to the site of the proposed action. So, yes, that's what the, in, uh, DEC indicated. Um, D, the site of the action is subject to an institutional control limiting the use of the property, e.g. easements or deed restrictions. No, okay. E, the proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure that the site remains protective of the environment and human health.
No.
No.
No, okay. The proposed action has adequate control measures in place to ensure the future generation, treatment, and or disposal of hazardous waste will be protected in the environment and human health. Okay. The proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management facility. No. H, the proposed action may result in the unearthing of solid or hazardous waste. The proposed action may result in an increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste. The proposed action may result in excretion or other disturbances within two thousand feet of a site used for the disposal of solid or hazardous waste.
Was there something in two thousand feet?
Um, there were DEC sites that were, um, contaminated, but not sol- not disposal sites of solid or hazardous waste. Uh, okay, the proposed action may result in the migration of explosive gases from a landfill site to adjacent offsite structures.
No.
No. The proposed action may result in the release of contaminant, contaminated leachate from the project site.
Yes.
Okay, yes for that. And then M, other impacts, we probably didn't, the proposed action is located within two thousand feet of the following sites in the DEC database. Just for further clarification. Seventeen is consistency with community plans. So the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, yes or no?
No.
That's worth.
Yes.
It's a double arrow, yeah.
Yes, it should be, yes.
So, we're saying that it's not consistent.
It's not.
The land use. Okay.
Which, which means it has an impact, in which case we would be checking off the yes box.
Right.
Okay, there we go. Um, A is the proposed action's land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to current surrounding land use patterns.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, the traffic, you know, the.
Increase the traffic.
The proposed land use components, so when you put the two properties together, you, uh.
Adjacent to the residential.
Yeah.
Adjacent to the residential housing, then it does, yes.
Where it is, the residential, yeah.
Okay, so moderate to large because of the, the adjacent, because of being adjacent to the residential. Correct. B, the proposed action will cause the permanent population of the city, town, or village in which the project is located to grow by more than five percent. The proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations. The proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans. Proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from.
Yes, yes.
Sure, sure, yeah. Could you guys elaborate on that a little, just so I can put it into the, um.
Basically, traffic.
Roads can't have.
Roads. The lit, the roads.
And vehicles.
Very, okay, awesome.
Absolutely, you understand.
Okay, D. Making sure I'm on the right line, yeah. The proposed action is located in an area characterized by low density development that will require new or that require new or expanded public infrastructure. Okay, the proposed action may induce secondary development impacts, e.g., residential, commercial, not included in the proposed action.
No.
Anything else? Okay, and last one for part two. Number eighteen, consistency with community character. Yes or no, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character?
Yes.
Okay, yes, we're saying it is inconsistent. So A, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community.
No.
And B, the proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, e.g., schools, police, and fire.
No.
The proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing.
No.
The proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources.
No.
The proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character.
Yes.
Small. Small impact.
Small.
Okay. Um, and F, the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Five acres of trees?
When five acres of trees, that should be a yes, right?
Yes.
That's a.
Okay, yeah, we can put yes to F. Um, and then G, we have, project site is adjacent to residential neighborhoods.
Yes.
So that is. For part two.
I want to ask for five minutes break, I'm sorry. Time is at ten twenty-five, five minutes break. Yep. Now you spend twenty-eight hours, what opens the board, present before or still present? Okay, I'd like to go through the evaluation of our resources.
Yes, so.
You're talking to the mic.
Okay, we're just gonna go through and do a quick summary of what we did in part two, and then you guys are gonna be voting after that. So, um, so we have. Check, yes, the impacts on land, the proposed project would increase the intensity of the land use of the project site. It would involve long periods of construction and may result in an increase in conversion. Anybody else to add? Um, groundwater, the proposed project has the potential to contaminate local wells from site runoff. Surface water, direct disturbance to wetlands on the property would be avoided, however, the project will alter buffer slash adjacent areas in several locations. Stormwater drainage would flow from stormwater management bases into these wetlands downstream. Flooding, the proposed action will modify the existing drainage patterns of the site with the potential to influence flooding and spark of debris. Air quality, the potential for air quality impacts is associated with construction equipment and warehouse operations, as well as additional traffic on the local roadway network from workers and trucks. Plants and animals, the proposed project results in the loss of approximately six acres of forested land located adjacent to the Claesland Mountain Park, which and the property may be home to local non-endangered or threatened species. Aesthetic resources, um, the project is visibly- visible from publicly accessible vantage points on the Claesland Mountain. Archaeological resources, the project site may have the potential to host archaeological resources. Open space and recreation, the project would reduce the amount of open space on the site and has the potential to result in a disruption to the adjacent Claesland Mountain Park. Transportation, the proposed action would create an unmitigated impact at the intersection of Mountain View Avenue and Bridge Three O Three, and has the potential to alter the present pattern of movement and movement of people and goods. Energy, the proposed warehouses are well over a hundred thousand square feet, have the potential to be heated and cooled, requiring large amounts of electricity. Noise, odor, and light, the proposed warehouse may produce noise and air pollution levels which would affect adjacent residential neighbors. Proposed lighting is also not dark sky compliant. Human health, the proposed action is located within two thousand feet of sites listed on the New York State DEC web database, and has the potential to result in the release of contaminated leachate. Community plans, the proposed project is, uh, inconsistent with local comprehensive plans, and I'm gonna add one more thing to this right now. This was a new one, so I'm sorry. And land uses components may be different from or in sharp contrast to surrounding land use patterns, as well as, uh, trucks and vehicles generated on the site are not supported by the existing transportation infrastructure. Community character, the proposed warehouse is inconsistent with the adjacent residential neighborhood. Yeah, so that was kind of the meat potatoes of the reasons for supporting this determination. That's what we've just gone through. Um, or the FBA, FBA, pardon, um, so we've determined that the type one for a seeker. We have all one, parts one, two, and three of this FBA. Um, Orange Town is going to be the determined lead agent of the Orange Town Petting Board, and then we get to, um, the board voting on a determination of significance. There's, um.
So at this point, you, you would need a motion for a determination of significance.
Motion for say, uh, for determination of significance.
What is that motion on?
Positive or negative?
For a positive declaration.
A second.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Please a second, all in favor?
I think you.
I.
Would you give a reason? Would you do a reason or?
Based on, based on.
Based on fourteen, uh, eighteen, box of two, check.
Based upon, yes, everything that. Review of part two and the part three recommendations.
So we're doing that again, or? Should it be a?
Mike made the motion, please a second.
A second.
On a roll, hold on. Hold on, Andy? Yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike? Yes.
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 Who's you can't vote, and I.
I know, I know that.
Yes.
And you voted yes.
I voted yes. Motion carries.
Mm-hmm.
Motion carries. That's it, where do we go from here?
I think I just wanna put a little plug in there for anybody that's still here. Um, the next steps will be, uh, scoping, creating a scoping document, which the applicant will supply to us, and we'll go over, and then there will be a public hearing to discuss that and to get public comments that we can then include in the scoping document as well. Uh, so that will be the next step. There is going to be a date determined, it's whenever the applicant gets that to us, um, and we're able to review it. And, um, there will be many more opportunities for public comment as we go forward throughout this process.
Okay, continue.
Thank you so much.
Should the applicant at this time then ask for continuation, or that just stops the process for them at this point?
I believe there's nothing else they need to do at this point. Yeah, they're, we're just gonna be waiting on them for their next submittal to keep the secret process going forward.
Okay.
I don't know if continuation would be appropriate, I don't know.
That's why, you know, since, you know, it's a PAZ deck, I wanted to clarify and make sure that we're following the correct procedure. Your town's consultant has indicated that the request for continuation is not required due to the PAZ deck.
How can we do this?
Okay, you do have to vote on.
Yes.
While the applicant cleans up.
I do that?
Oh, yeah.
Four on the minutes. Four on the minutes. Yeah. Gender of project? Project, does it? Two project.
Project.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Actually, you want to take mine? Yeah. Yeah. G, Chester. So.
C?
C, S, C, R, M, A.
At Orange Town, yeah.
Well, it's the wicked chair.
Yeah, four on the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on minutes. We're still recording, right?
Yeah.
Which minute do you want to do first?
We have April tenth, we have April twenty-fourth, and then we have May eighth.
You have the.
That's not all, no, Joe. The conditions that we had, anyway.
Yeah, they were, they were at the.
But I haven't seen them.
They were sent to you guys.
I didn't get it.
May tenth and May twenty.
I need the last one, May tenth, I spoke to Cheryl on the phone regarding the, because of the minutes I got. Started out with, uh, with the project, and then jumped over to, uh, to another project in Pearl River. I called and spoke to her on that, and as.
When did you speak to her, Mike?
Hmm?
When did you speak to her?
Um, we, this, uh, did the list with Thursday, Friday. Then she said she'd look at it and get it corrected, and they had to add the five conditions. And we made, was it May eighth?
I did do that.
I didn't see it.
It was an attachment.
What?
It wasn't just a minute, it was conditions were separate sheet.
Right, it was supposed to be attached, but I never saw the attachment.
Okay, it was actually a sheet that Aera had.
They just don't hold.
Are you talking about the May eighth?
Yes.
Push it. The ones on the, uh. On the.
The WPT.
Right, so it, the five conditions were attached as a separate sheet.
Yeah, I never saw that sheet. Because I spoke.
Do you see the five conditions? Can you read it, please?
Can you read it, Mike? Negative. Because that's what I spoke to her about, because the original one was all over the place.
Uh, my one concern is that how people voted wasn't on there. Should that be on there?
I don't, I don't review the minutes, so. It should be.
It's not, I thought.
All right, well, obviously, there's too much discrepancy, so we'll, she'll have to recirculate it.
We can do the others.
The two of them.
Yeah, we'll do the others.
So which ones can, which ones can we do?
May tenth.
Uh, let's do that first.
Okay.
That's the last meeting?
Second, or the.
May tenth.
May tenth.
May tenth is the one we're talking about, you have the conditions.
No, that's, that's May, I'm sorry, not May tenth, April tenth.
Okay. I have a motion to approve April tenth meeting as corrected. Second, all right, make the motion.
No, I, I need a motion.
Oh, you're there.
Thank you, at least makes a motion. Andy seconds, all favor? I, any vote, uh. Was, who was, I'm sorry, who was?
He said Lisa made it and Andy seconded, but.
Okay, well, let's change it around, whatever you want to go with.
That's okay.
I'm gonna say.
We also have the April twenty-fourth.
Okay, motion to approve April twenty-fourth minutes as corrected. Motion to approve April twenty-fourth, Mr. Mandel?
As corrected.
Do we have a second? Andy second.
See, you don't care.
All right.
All favor? I, any vote, uh. Anything else?
That's it.
Motion to a second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. All favor? I, I vote.